We're good.
Wait, have you had your graduation? The one in Morris? How did that go? Did you have the weather?
So I said yes.
You're invited to be done? Oh, so a hundred kids? Wait, so what is it? At more than you do it, so they split it in half, so it's about 200 seniors? That decided to be a part of the ceremony? Oh, I didn't realize it was that small. Good for him, though.
Sure, I just wanted to let you know.
Wednesday, is there a fan concert too or no?
There might be, I'm not aware.
I am.
Have you never tried their oven?
Yeah, you can, you can, you can sit there. Pull that chair up if you want, so you're not so low.
Do you feel the handle, it's on the bottom of the seat? Pull it out as you kind of lift your.
Right by the arm. Alfred John.
Sorry, so, no, you're fine.
Eric, we're, it's at six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Just so that everyone knows, this evening, we're down two board members. Brenda is, we tried, it was our goal that we would have this discussion with the full board. And the softball season had a rescheduling of a game to this evening, so Brenda cannot be here. And Melissa is not going to be here as well. So we're just going to go ahead with four board members. I just want to briefly talk regarding last meeting that we had. You know, I want to acknowledge that it was a difficult meeting for all of us and, you know, I certainly will personally apologize for raising my voice and, and not acting as I should have as board chair, so. As a board, we realize that we need to work on some things and, and our goal is to do that. And in, in terms of communicating better and working together better as well as moving forward. And that's what we're going to be doing this evening. With that being said, I, I'd like to have a motion in a second to accept the revised agenda and vote on that. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Being none all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to open forum, I just wanted to briefly make a couple of statements regarding open forum as we started, as we started this evening. A number of years ago, we never had an open forum and it was brought to the attention that it would be a good time to allow people to come and speak. And so we instituted an open forum, we actually instituted some policy. And I think that Lori, you might have been involved in that, you and Noel Stansrud. Anyways, at that time, you know, our goal was to just say, let's reserve some time, roughly 10 minutes to allow people to speak. And our intent was to essentially listen, not to try to answer questions. Obviously, we, we wouldn't have necessarily even known what might have been brought forward. And so that's what we've done over the years. We understand now that it seems like, first of all, if we don't say anything or acknowledge even what has been said, that it's like we're not listening and that's not exactly, that's not what we want to do. And it's not that we don't listen, we do listen, but we don't respond to what often appears that way. So we're looking at some ideas to maybe change it a little bit. One thing that we will start to do is if there are some questions that are brought forward, we will respond to those within a timely way, you know, not necessarily 48 hours, but sometime hopefully in the next few days, depending on when the board meeting is. We do take and listen to what people say, but that doesn't necessarily mean that there will be further action or anything. So we just wanted to start with that, to let you know that. We don't want to make it intimidating, we don't want to have to banter back and forth, we just want to give you an opportunity to speak and go from there. And with that being said, I didn't know if there's anything else to share, Lori, regarding that?
No, I think, well, I, I would add that I think the general feeling also is that sometimes people are brave enough to stand up there and speak. We listen always and that they feel like not much, we don't do much in between. And I think I also just wanted to say publicly that, of course, we do. For example, when the first, the, the cuts first came out and they were recommendations. In between that time and people came and spoke on behalf of some of them, a lot of work was done. At least from board leadership, we met with principals, we asked questions of our tech director. I went and met with Ralph, I talked to different teachers, I asked questions about the cuts, the implications. So I just want people to understand that even though it doesn't happen right at the board meeting, there is work that's being done in between the concerns being brought up and the decisions that are being made. So I guess I just wanted to add that.
That being said, the first one up is Lauren Paulbitt. Roughly, we'll give you three minutes.
All right, well, thank you. I hope you can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, so good evening, Superintendent, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm going to talk fast because I know my time is limited and I want to be respectful of your time as well. If you have questions or comments, please let me know when I'm done speaking. But I understand from what you just shared that you might just be listening and we'll, we'll perhaps talk later. So my name is Lauren Paulbitt. I was a student of Shisago Lake School District for eight years prior to me graduating in 2002. I moved away for 10 years and came back when I had children because I wanted to raise them in this community. And I have a lot of respect for this district in terms of the quality of education. Mr. Jensen, I previously emailed you following the last meeting on April 5th to express my concerns. And at that time, I told you I didn't need a response. And this is because I was hopeful and maybe a little naive to think that my, my voice would be heard as well as the voice of other individuals and that maybe some changes would be made. And from what I've been hearing, which may not all be accurate, I don't feel like that's the case and that's why I'm here tonight. So there's a lot of things that we can talk about, the one thing, and maybe it's rehashing something and it's pointless, but I wanted to come and speak about it now with the budget deficit. So first and foremost, I want Alet to let you know that I'm well aware that our district is not alone and that I understand that many districts across the state and across the country are experiencing the same things that we are. And this is not unique. I also want to acknowledge the great work of the district throughout the pandemic. My children are doing well emotionally and academically. And I, I think that a lot of that is because of the dedication of teachers and the educators and everybody putting together plans. And I really appreciate it. The one thing I do want to talk about, though, is that due to the pandemic, many people in this community are facing financial hardship. My wages have personally been affected, but I'm okay with that and I accept that. And the reason is, is because first, I understand that I'm, I'm with millions of Americans whose wages have been affected and are facing financial hardship because of the pandemic. Second, my leaders stepped up and took a wage reduction as well that was significantly greater than my own for an extended period of time. And third, I understand that in order to serve the mission of my company, that this is what I needed to do to allow my company to continue to support those individuals that we serve without stripping resources and compromising their care. So I guess with that lens, I'm asking, I don't understand why you haven't done the same. You decided to cut resources from our children, potentially compromising the quality of their education in order to, in part, increase your wages, while proposing a tax levy to get more money from the community that's already facing financial hardship that you have not allowed yourself to face as well. And I'm not saying that you don't deserve raises, I'm not deserving, saying that you don't deserve the salary that you have. What I'm saying is, is that we are in the midst of a pandemic and we all need to make sacrifices. That's my expectation of you as leaders to step up and show that your commitment to our children is greater than your pocketbook. Mr. Jensen, I understand that you proposed taking a pay cut, something about a $10,000 reduction. And the board decided that $10,000 compared to 41 million is a drop in the bucket. But when I look over the budget, I see that $10,000 would help in a lot of areas, like supply budgets, extracurricular activities. All of those line items are under $10,000. And if all district leaders, not just you, all district leaders, the top tier earners, were, who are responsible for the financial health of the school district, were to take temporary wage reductions or wage freezes, that amount would surely equal, I'm guessing, $50,000 or more, which would greatly be, impact our children and the community's view on your commitment to them. So I understand that we're bare bones and there are difficult decisions that we need to make, but I can't support these decisions unless they're equitable. And taking your salaries off the table when you're eliminating entire jobs and stripping resources from our children is not equitable. I personally will not be willing to vote yes on a referendum until I see that you and other district leaders are willing to step up and show that you know what it means to lead. Last thing I want to say is that I recognize that the school district budget is extremely complex and I could not do it. And I also don't support the suggestion that community leaders come in and step up and help. But what I would suggest is that if we haven't done so already, that we hire financial consultants. And I'm not talking about somebody coming and tell us how to run a levy. I'm telling, talk to address a symptom. I'm talking about somebody that can tell, come in and address the root cause of the issue. But with that aside, my ask at this time is that the board vote to amend the budget reductions and take into consideration wage reductions and wage freezes for district leaders. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Lauren. Up next then is Sarah Lavasser. She here? Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. First, I want to start out and say that I'm a little bit upset that there's only five of the seven of you here. This wasn't a message that I was hoping to deliver to just five of you, but all seven of the board members, including Mr. Jensen. So on April 21st, I reached out to the entire school board and Superintendent Jensen in an email voicing my concerns coming out of the open door meeting, targeting Jeff Lindeman on April 20th. To date, I've received a response from exactly two of you. Two of the seven of you have stepped up and accepted ownership for your actions, while the other five have chosen to hide behind a blanket statement. Two of the seven of you have responded and said, I hear you and your voice matters, while the other five sit on deaf ears. One of you who didn't respond is a well-paid administrator, a hired leader and taxpayer-funded employee. This equates to a 28% response rate, 28%. You guys, we hold our kids and students to higher standards and they are not adults and they are not running our schools. We can all agree that this is far from passing, much like the current condition of our school district. If this was a business, our doors would be closed, not just from the four-year declining fiscal slide that we have yet to provide a long-term or short-term solution for, but also for irresponsible spending habits. Stacked on top of this, our admin refusing to step up and not only own this situation, but find ways to overcome it, we are operating in a failed ecosystem, much like my email stated for those of you who didn't acknowledge or may not have read it. When I tune into board meetings, I'm frustrated that I mostly see only board members and admin at the table. I commend you for making room at the table for student representation, but where is the teacher representation? These individuals are on the front lines being impacted by the decisions you make that have no voice. Where is the community representation at the table, the people that you serve and work for? These are the people who should have the loudest voice and the greatest impact, who should be helping with providing solutions and who should be given more of a voice than a three-minute open forum slide that goes unheard. I ask you all to take a look around the table and at yourselves and reevaluate why you are here. Who should you be working for, whose voice should you be listening to, who should you be serving? If you ask my three children today, who is on the school board or who their school superintendent is, they wouldn't know. Both my husband and I grew up and graduated from Shisago and couldn't tell you who was serving at the time we were there either. What we can tell you and what my kids can tell you is who our teachers were, what sports and activities we participated in and how these people and experiences shaped us into who we are today. I am here now, missing my son's baseball game, to deliver a message that I hope will this time get a response. The time is now, you need to start doing better for our children, our community, our teachers. Thank you.
Lastly up is Jeff Lindeman.
I'm going to delay my request in public to give this board a chance to do the right thing. So I will not be speaking at open forum.
Just, I do want to thank both Lauren and Sarah for sharing what's, what's on your heart and we'll go forward from there. Thank you, Lauren and Sarah. Anyway, let's move forward. Communications update, the first item would be some information from Ralph Fairchild, our middle school principal regarding the sixth grade Allied Arts background to what we're trying to do there.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I'm here tonight just to kind of go over the impacts of the middle school reductions that we're going to have. And, and the starting place is always that when you are making changes, you know, you got to look at why you're making them. And this is a change that we're kind of forced to make because of our budget situation. The number we were given was $265,000 to cut at our building. So how do you do that? How do you move forward? How do you make it as positive as you can while you're doing some terrible things or some things that are really going to be hard? Now, a couple of things we need to clear up. We did not add English Language Arts to grade six in order to reduce the allies. There have always been two periods of English Language Arts at the middle school for as long as, you know, for, I don't know how long, but a long time, as long as I've been here and years before then. If I'm a sixth grader next year, I'm going to have a math period, okay? Just like sixth graders in the past have always had. I will have a social studies period, which is Minnesota history in grade six. One period of that, just like kids have always had in the past, that's sixth grade. I will have science every day, one period, just like sixth grade has always had in the past. I will have science, one period, just like the sixth graders have always had in the past. I will have two periods of English Language Arts, just like sixth graders have always had in the past. I will have one period every day that's split between FIED and either my band or my choir, just like kids have always had in the past. Those are the things that we're keeping that are the same, okay? We are adding a new version of advisement and flexible learning time that we're working on and trying to make that into something that will be productive, something that will allow us to do interventions so that we don't have to pull kids out of classes to do interventions. Our periods will be longer, that means you'll have more time in those classes that you do have. The interventions won't cost your child a class. We'll have more sections of seventh and eighth grade Allied Arts instead of the nine, we'll have 10. So those class sizes will be smaller. We will have more sections of English in grades seven and eight. And we will have more sections of math in grades six, seven and eight. Doing all of that while we're reducing. It's not perfect, but we're trying to do the best we can with the cuts that we have. Our focus is on literacy. That's a good thing. We're going to have less crowded lunches than we've had in the past, also a good thing. For those of you who have been there in the past and were at the lunches where it was one whole grade all at once, those are, that's crowded. Going to five lunches instead of three is a good thing. So that kind of hits the, the highlights of what we're doing. Questions?
In what you, what I have in our board book is, could you speak a little bit to the sixth graders? It said what the sixth graders won't get, what the sixth graders will get.
Sure, I, I kind of addressed what the sixth graders will get. That's those classes I talked about.
Okay.
But the things that they're not going to get next year, to answer that question, is they will not get the one quarter-long classes that they've had this year that are, that are like the second Allied Art section, if you consider math or if you consider PE and the music and the choir as one. And those classes include project lead the way, art, health and
Okay.
and computer skills. Yeah.
All right, so in, in, as it shares for art, you're basically sharing it's more PE time every other day.
Well, you have more FIED time than you did as a, as an elementary student because it's every other day. So you get that, you know, movement.
All right.
But the periods are a little longer too.
Okay, I was just trying to put that in a perspective in following what you were sharing. All right, so there's more music time than was in fifth grade, there's more science time and, and the issues regarding project lead the way, computer skills and health. Okay, I just wasn't sure, I was just trying to look through that. In the other questions, anyone have?
Mr. Fairchild, I think you did a good job explaining, you know, what those kids are going to have each day. There is a misunderstanding, I think, about how the, that the study halls have gone away, which I think is probably a positive. If, could you share a little bit about how the studies halls have gone away? But we've gone to standard advisements and how you see that as a positive for our middle school kids.
Yep, I sure do see that as a positive. Let me explain why. Right now, when you have a study hall, you have a study hall with the teacher that you're assigned to. What we're hoping to do with this flexible learning time is to have an opportunity for kids to go see the teacher that they actually need to see. And for a way for the teacher who needs to see the kid to request them to come and see them. Right now, that happens if your study hall lines up with a prep or it happens if the teacher stays after school. This would give us a chance to make that work differently. I, I think more positively.
They can get some independent help from the teacher that they're struggling in their class, for example.
You'd be able to get some help. Now, to say independent or one-on-one, no, because we're still going to have other kids in there.
But they are going to not have their study halls disappear. But one of those would be, one of the five days would be an advisement and then there'd be four days of some flex time, is that how I understand it?
Yeah, what we're planning right now is the first day of the week for the first quarter is going to be advising. And the first two weeks, every day is going to be advisement because we have a lot of business kind of stuff to do. You know, yes, you know, from being a teacher. And then it'll be, the other days of the week will be that flexible learning time. Now, we're still working through that as to what that looks like, how that works, how we do those interventions. Because we're going to be pulling kids from those flexible learning times to do the interventions that right now take place in an RTI class, which means they don't get a class. So we're trying to do some of those positive things with that. It is not perfect yet and we don't have it all figured out, but we are working together on it to try to do that.
And then if I'm a incoming fifth grader with reading intervention needs.
Right.
Will I get a pullout for that help during the day?
It depends what kind of intervention you need. If you need the full-on decoding class, yep, you're going to get pulled just like you always have been. And those kids have always missed a class when they did that. And they will continue to do that for the kids that do that. And today, we were talking at our problem-solving team about how many kids that would be. And we're thinking that would be in that 45 to 50 kids in that range. Now, some of them will progress out of that and get back into the regular ed cycle and some won't during the year. But the trade-off is this is your last real chance to make a big impact with reading for a child. And our focus is on literacy this go-around. So it was a trade-off, you know, it came down to me making that decision and I, I made it and I'll own it. Because I think that's what's important and I think that is the right call.
So those kids get pulled out approximately what amount of time?
For which one?
If there are the reading intervention, the 40 to 40, 45 to 50 students.
Those kids will be pulled out from a class, just like they have been in the past.
And which class would it be?
It has typically been social studies.
Okay, and so those 45.
Social studies or the Allied Arts.
Okay, so those 45 to 50 kids will probably have half their day then in English or reading or something like that.
Three of the six instructional periods, yes. And then the, the period that's advisement, you know, if you want to count that in there, then it's not half. But if you're saying those instructional periods, yes, three of six. As opposed to three of seven last year.
There were about 80 to 90 parents on families of Shisago Lake Schools that really had a, a robust discussion about losing Allied Arts. And Mrs. Lavasser spoke earlier about our job as board members representing the wishes of the parents for our students, their children, in their service of them. So, and, and then my kind of a tag along with this, and I'll get to the question here, is your staff. So when you look at the Allied Arts coming out, which I don't think anybody thinks that's a good thing, right? And I know there's some trade-offs and things, but how supportive do you think parents and staff are of losing Allied Arts in the sixth grade?
I think in the vacuum of thinking of just that as the only thing, that people would not support that. But when you put that in the context of what else are you going to cut? Are you going to lose a second hour of English Language Arts? I think you would have had a different group of people, just as robust and just as excited about that.
So I guess my issue a bit is that these parents didn't know until they knew and it was after the cut. How do we do a better job of serving our constituents and those parents, especially of those children that lose that Allied Arts? So we get them a little better of, I don't know necessarily buy-in, but just how do we get them, how do we do a better job of serving their needs, I guess? And that's a bigger question, maybe a philosophical question, not one so much for you. But that is a overall writing theme on families of Shisago Lakes Schools, which are a lot of really wonderful people there concerned about their children. So I, I guess I would just put that out as a charge to us as school board members. How do we inform, and you probably can't over-inform these days with 260 kids in that grade. I don't know how many are in that particular one coming in. But I just think we always constantly have to meet that challenge of serving and helping them know before. And helping them know before we make that decision, so that's a, to me, a. A, a great big picture, big philosophy thing, but how do we do just a better job? Cause it really did hit us hard. At, after the decisions were made, and, and all I'm saying is we need to look at that and do a better job of that as a board. And as all of us make decisions that affect kids. So I'm sad they're not going to get allied arts. I hope that we can bring those back if we ever find ourselves in a better financial situation. There's maybe no question.
I was waiting for the question mark, yeah. So.
So Ralph, I had a conversation with a couple of teachers from the middle school. Who were actually saying that they were excited about the prospect of getting closer to that team concept, sorry, I'm fogging up again. But that, that, there's gonna be more movement towards a team of teachers knowing a group of kids well, so that they can. Talk about it, or if they have concerns, they can problem solve. So is your new plan in some way getting them closer to, back to this team concept, cause they seem to talk as if it was?
It, it is our goal to do that. And we can only do so in a limited fashion, because we are one whole social studies teacher down.
Yes.
So in our setting, we can't really make it full teams where we can share those social studies teachers with the team. But right now, the plan is to have the English Language Arts, the math. And the science kids shared among a group of teachers.
Okay.
So let's say that you and Dean and I were a team. We would share a group of kids. And when we had our team meetings, we would only have those, you know, how many ever that is, half of the two hundred and seventy-two or whatever we're projecting. Would have us for those classes, and instead of being in a meeting where we're trying to discuss two hundred and seventy-two, we're discussing significantly less than that. Which will, should allow us to focus on those kids a little more in detail and make that a little better, that's something that. You know, as part of the old school. Middle school model, which I think is a good thing. And when we can shrink the world for the kid in school. And, you know, we can shrink that a little bit for them. And have them have more people in common that know them and care about them. That's a good thing, and we're trying to do that in all of the grade levels. In sixth grade, we're going back to the one floor and the second floor. And, you know, so that we have that too, so we see those kids in the hall. Now, there are gonna be kids, you know, with our social studies that will be up and around still. But we're trying to do those core classes that way. Yep.
So Ralph, just to be clear, those core classes will share then the same students.
Correct.
So really kind of, you know, making it smaller for their environment.
Yep, the kids I have for science, I would send to you for math, and then you would send them to Lori for reading. Or however, you know, however it works around there.
And I think I would just second, I don't think anyone disagrees that no one wants to see the hands-on allied arts go away, like. We would have voted for nothing to have to go away for sure, and I think what Ralph was saying too is if it hadn't been the allied arts. Instead it had been English, and you have a kid who needs that English, you'd be here maybe talking about that. That is what's really difficult about reductions, there's nothing we want to cut, we believe in our programs, that's why we built them. None of us want to see them go away, and the impassioned statements of the industrial tech teachers, like, we all know how wonderful they are, my kids had them, like, it's. So if indeed we can get to the financial place again, where we can add it back. And we can add a social studies teacher, so you can get back to teams, of course, that will be our goal. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I agree.
And, you know, and I took more shop classes than I should admit to in high school. But, you know, that was a big, big deal to me too, and it, it, those were good programs. You know, they are good programs, but like you say. You know. We're cutting, and when we cut, it's gonna hurt.
And then I did have a question. So in one of the classes, you said would it not be returning was health? Is that, I'm guessing it's not an requirement for Minnesota to have a health class?
We should have a health class in sixth grade. Yes, we should, but we're not going to be able to this year. Yeah, just like we, we were supposed to have an art class in seventh grade, but we didn't, cause we didn't have the resources to do that in the past.
Okay, I just didn't know if there is like in fifth grade, or there's some type of health. Thing or if there's an alternate that you guys have in the elementary, middle school areas for that, cause I know there's one in tenth grade.
We have health in seventh and eighth grade.
Okay.
So they will have two years of health at the, at the, at the middle school.
Perfect.
Thanks for asking that, cause I, I did not mention what they would have at the other grade levels.
Thank you.
Yep. Any further questions?
I just had one thing to ask and kind of get clarified, so for seventh and eighth grade, they would have those allied arts like PLTW and stuff?
Yep.
Okay.
And even more important, well, not more important, but just as important. That allied art teacher will be linked with that. With that team for the quarter. So that when I have, if I'm the teacher teaching project lead the way, or computer skills, or art, or health. I will be working with that team for that quarter. With a common prep. During that quarter. Yep.
Are there other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairchild.
Alright. We've had a number of. Students involved in extracurricular activities that have excelled during the winter months, and. I'm going to read these off, and I hopefully that I won't make a major mistake regarding pronunciation, but first up is. Some. People that, some of our students that were involved. In our speech program. Anyways, there was two students Riley Sullivan and Grace Store, who advanced to the twenty twenty-one Minnesota State High School League State Speech Tournament. Which was held this past April on Friday the twenty-third. We wanna congratulate them. And then there were a number of other speech. Students that placed in the seven double A section meet. Which was held on Saturday, April tenth, and those are Riley Sullivan. Second place in extemporaneous reading, Grace Store, third place in original oratory. Lena Hoff, fifth place in infor, informative. Lydia Laffine, fifth place in discussion. Maggie Willie. Fifth place in storytelling. Wood, seventh place in extemporaneous reading. Maya Adlin, seventh place in poetry. Samantha Krieg. Seventh place in duo. Sophia Anderson, seventh place in duo. Brianna Ritter, eighth place in duo. Addison Rule, eighth place in duo. Marissa Rosso, eighth place in poetry. Teresa Lenberg, eighth place in humorous. And Caitlin Nelson, eighth place in drama. Want to congratulate them. We also had a number of other activities, these are essentially, these are fall sports activities, and I'm gonna go through them and. Mention the students that excelled. First of all, for. Girls tennis. All conference were Greta Gilach. Emily Erickson, Jill Erickson, Chloe Zupko. Grace De Vries. Honorable mention was Jenna Laurie. And then. Eight, in Mississippi eighth. MVP was Greta Gilach, so that was in the Mississippi eight conferences, the most valuable player. For girls soccer, we have four all-conference. Avery Constant, Raina Barrett. Alyssa Hempel. And Dylan Grave. And then honorable mention. Was Amber Peterson. For boys soccer, there was three all-conference. Aiden Luger, Ryan Zaruba, Braden Birds. And three honorable mention, Ryan Sandvig, Spencer Nelson. And Lucas Helen. Cross country had three all-conference. Henry Johnson, Maya Adlin, and Laney Helen. Volleyball had all-conference Samantha Paulson, and two honorable mention were Samantha Olson and Ashley Peltier. For football, four all-conference were Owen Fasti, Ryan Sandvik, Thomas Sargent. And Austin Seifert. And honorable mention were Sam Hannity. Harnady, I'm sorry. Sailor Olson, Carson, Minishaw, Minichoff, Minishaw, or I, I don't know how do I.
Minixaw.
Okay, and Braden Carr. And then for girls swim and dive. Emily Fiorella was all-conference in swimming, Eleanor Undem, all-conference in swimming. Lydia Laffine, all-conference in swimming. Hattie Updall was all-conference in dive, and Claudia Stipe was all-conference in dive. And we had a number of band members that. I'm, they're on the all-conference side, so I'm just gonna say that, that's what they were. Alejandro de Alva in percussion. Hallie Eisfelder in flute. Emily Fiorella, alto sax. Sarah Frankson percussion. Lena Hoff clarinet. Eric Cargill. Alto sax, Molly Mulberg flute. Alexis Pliscott trumpet. Allison Rogier flute. Reagan Triplet flute. Quentin Carlson trumpet. And Liam Jensen percussion. And then in choir, we had Ann Nelson soprano alto. Ellen Norton soprano alto, Audra Rambo soprano alto. Maggie Willie soprano alto, Riley Abbott tenor bass. Riley Antilac tenor bass, Ethan Carlson tenor bass. And Nathaniel Palmy tenor bass. So we just wanted to mention all of those students that excelled in extracurriculars this fall. And winter. Alright, moving on, student representative update. Anne and John, we're gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, I'm, I'll start, Anne. Um, so yeah, so we had prom two weekends ago, John went to grand march, I just went to prom. It was a blast, we got to go on track field and have it. We did not have, wear, wear masks because we were outside and, you know, supervision and all those kinds of things. So that was, you know, positive thing that I did, I didn't expect to have happen. We had the choir concert last week was our last one, and then the band concert is actually today. So I'll touch base with them to see how, how it went, but yeah, it was really fun. So we're kind of just chilling a little bit, cause we're all done with the concerts for now. Graduation is June seventh for the seniors. And then the rest of the school is done on the ninth. So it's coming around the corner, lots of finals and those types of things to worry about right now, but that's how it works. Um, yeah, and then. Oh, the environmental light class. They had to, like, for their final project, they had to make it like a sustainability. Type of thing, and one of them is having a clothing drive in the high school. And so that's going on this week, it's just for high school students to bring in like old clothes that they don't want, or shoes or whatnot. So I know that's happening, and that's pretty cool that they have to. You know, put it to work and actually have it happen, which is pretty cool, I'm not in it, I have some friends like juniors and seniors who are in it. So yeah. I think that's the bulk of, bulk of it.
Yeah, I'll talk on some other things, so I didn't go to prom, but I was emceeing grand march, and that went well, I think there was a total of like thirty students that signed up to do it. Not all of them ended up showing up, but the majority of them did. Choir concert would happened. And last Friday for Link Crew, which is something we do at the high school where upperclassmen take on freshmen incoming, just help them get. To know the high school and what happens there, last Friday, we had some training for that, and we'll have more in the fall. I think that's about it, Anne talked on most of the things I was gonna, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think one thing to mention, this is Anne's last meeting with us, and you've been representative for the students for the last two years, so. We do want to thank you for that and tell you a great job, you've been a great representative throughout the, the time, you've always been. Super positive and, and excited about what's happening, not only in your world, but all your classmates as well, so. Just want to say thank you for two years of working with the board and being a part of our. Our meetings and doing a great job representing the student body, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Maybe you could tell us what you're doing next year too, you know, what your plans are, so we know kind of where you're headed.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm really grateful that I was able to help the community and the board as representative for past two years. And I know John will do great as a senior. I'm not sure who, who, who you have lined up as a junior representative, but I'm sure they'll get the hang of it, and I think they'll do great. But yeah, thank you for this opportunity, and I'm, I've learned a lot on the board and just. It helped shape me of who I am and what I want to do later on in my life. And with that, I'm gonna go to Saint Thomas in the fall. For business administration, so, and you've had a little bit of an impact on me. Just a little bit. But yeah, so yeah, thank you guys, I am, I'm sad this is my last time, but I'm really happy, so thank you.
Yeah, great job.
Yeah, absolutely.
Keep in touch, Anne, let us know how you're doing.
Yep, I will.
Good.
Alright. We received several donations, three of them actually. At the Wildcat Community Center, we received a free little library with books for children, basically age birth to five years old. Tanya Payne has basically been the lead on getting that happening and getting that going, so we appreciate that. The Blandon Foundation has donated eight desktop computers for the public space at the Wildcat Community Center. And they're to be used for senior technology classes, as well as youth technology classes that are starting up in the fall. And the IT department at the high school received a house grant for two thousand dollars, and. That's to help build skills in the machining industry, so we're, we appreciate that, and I think that the last one in the house is actually a scholarship, so. Two thousand dollars scholarship, yeah. So we appreciate that. Up next is Director of Business Service update, Robin Bosman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The first document I have there is the financial update. And that is as of April thirtieth, and it does have the revised budget in it, so that's the first time it's showing the revised budget. The biggest changes there are showing it closer in food service and community service, when we brought those budgets down. Just showing the changes in the revenue and expenditures there in those two funds. Adding in a budget for the construction funds, because we didn't have a budget in there before. In the original budget. And so those are the biggest changes on the, on, in those funds, does anybody have any questions on these? Besides those two? Or those three? Changes, there aren't a lot of other changes to it. Can you bring up the other document I had too, Eric? I did create another document, just because we've talked so much about federal funding lately. I put together a document. As of today, because we know it's changing almost every day as well, cause I've got, I, we just got some new funding as of last week even, last Friday. I'll just wait till you get that there, yep, that's fine. Then everybody can see it too. Okay, so at the top, I put on the CRF funding or the. Corona relief funding. And that's the, that is the money that we got at the beginning of the year. And that was, had to, that money had to be spent by December thirtieth. And those allowable uses were, and I put in quotes there, but for COVID. So that month meant that it had to be, it was unbudgeted, it wasn't anything that we had in our budget. They were expenses that we, you know, wouldn't have had, we would not have spent but for COVID. So that's the eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, that was the direct amount that we got, and we also got some money from the Shisago County and Washington County. So you can see those amounts there, the eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand we got direct. We got just under two hundred thousand from Shisago, and then five hundred and, five thousand and five hundred and forty-four dollars from Washington County. That money was spent on software, hardware, PPE, staff development. Some are tier one childcare, some cleaning supplies and food distribution. I know I've got finance codes over on the side there, those are more for myself and my, my staff, just because we have to keep them straight into all the different finance codes that we have. Then under that, we've got the S R one. The ninety percent, the nine and a half percent, and then the gear one. So we got total there, it's about two hundred and nine thousand, those three together. This money has to be spent by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. But this money has to be spent before any of the other funding sources can be spent. S R one has to be spent before S R two or S R three can be spent.
So that's kind of a new development recently with the guidance that that needs, cause we had, we had said that we had reserved that for summer school. To make sure that we had a funding source for summer school should something not come, so this one clarify, that's a new development, so. We have to spend that, that, that allocation first before S R two or three.
Right, but we've got some good news underneath that too.
So what are we spending it on?
Well, if you can see off to the side there, we're gonna use it for some food, we have spent a little bit on food distribution, some PPE, and some hardware and some software. But we can, what. But we can, what the allowable uses are there and they always put everything in there is underserved populations. Mental health, technology, sanitizing, cleaning and summer school. But summer school is in next fiscal year. Which I'm not gonna get into fiscal years, but it has to be in next fiscal year. So we'll be using that. And then S R two, which we've just applied for, it was just, I was just able to apply for that. And I need to create a budget within the next three weeks. That we had, we have the 795,000 and 375,000 of that was used to offset our budget reductions. So we have another about $400,000 there to use and then we can use it in that same grouping there of underserved population, mental health, technology, sanitizing and summer school. Some of the, can you go down just a little bit, Eric? I just want to show, these are some of the two new pots of money that, and I'm saying pots of money, but that have just come out in the last couple of days, the extended learning summer programs. And this is for, and the governor's discretionary ARP funds. And so the first amount there, it's 101,000 and that that is an estimate based on our projected student numbers. That we gave the state just a few weeks ago. And that is for in-person summer school and it can only be spent on summer school, that amount. And it's four dollars per student per hour that we get. And then the governor's discretionary ARP funds and that's to support academic enrichment and mental health starting in the summer. So that's for the summer as well, so those are two pots of money that we can use for summer school. So that's kind of taking on that S R one money.
Over on the top for like S R one funds and stuff.
And maybe Mr. Simmons can answer that as well, but Chromebooks is hardware, I mean, any software is.
Yes, I'm happy to speak to that, so a lot of our like software would be any subscriptions, anything from like CSAT at elementary levels. Majority of that was on Chromebooks and hardware, just to kind of get distance learning kicked off. But anything subscriptions, a lot of software pieces to support distance learning.
And then at the very bottom there, we have the S R three money and that's that one point, almost 1.8 million dollars. And the application on that one is not yet available. And that one is available until September 30th, 2024. What I've seen so far in that, twenty percent is to be spent on learning loss. And eighty percent of that on back to the whole underserved population, mental health, technology, sanitizing, cleaning and summer school. So we're just starting that process on that one, but I don't, I mean, I haven't gotten an application to be able to do that one yet. So I just wanted to give you an update on things that are coming out and like I said, it's almost daily that things are changing and as it goes, so I thought just a quick update on that from my perspective.
So Robin, just to clarify, you said the new money that's just come in the last couple of days specifically has to be used this summer. For summer school, mental health.
The extended learning programs, it can be, they can go over two years, that's why the spend dates there. The extended learning program can be spent through next year of September 30th, 2022. But it can only be spent on summer school, so we can spend it this summer or next summer.
On summer school.
The governor's discretionary ARP funds can be spent on summer school, but we can spend it, they said during the school year as well. But then again, they said summers program, so there's some clarification on that as well.
Because the three categories I heard from the governor this week were summer school, enrichment like field trips and mental health.
Yep, there are actually four. Well, there's two of them that are considered community programming. There's two community programming and then field trips and mental health. And that's part of the application process.
The dollars, they're not giving us freedom to decide where we need the dollars necessarily in some of these new monies, they're saying summer school and.
Right, correct, yep. But that's okay, because we're having summer school, so it'd be nice to have that money to be able to pay for it.
We want to pay for our summer school, for sure.
Yeah, and then I know Dean shared this with me today and I had one earlier, but this kind of shows a picture of all the different funding sources and just kind of in a nice flowchart.
I believe I shared that with the board too, so you have, kind of puts it all.
I'm like, woo.
There's a lot of categories, yeah.
Yeah, and trying to keep them straight into which funding, finance code and everything, so. It'll be interesting year end for us trying to figure out where everything goes, but it'll be a challenge. We, well, I'm not gonna answer that, mental health's not my area, but.
Yeah, as far as the social emotional program that we have now, there's in each building, we have psychologists, we also have other counselors in the buildings, that type of thing, so that's a piece of it, working with those programs, but also with our curriculum. We have a curriculum for social emotional learning too, that's implemented at our grade levels. So that's a piece of it as well. With the new monies that might be available, I think part of what we're thinking about is an additional support that would be direct service to students. We'd have to find those people as well and I think everybody from around the state will be looking for them too. So we've had our programming in place up to this point. Now that there's additional monies that would be set aside for that, we have to. The recommendation right now that we're seeing coming from our administration is to add support personnel that would work directly with students. And also, you know, consider staff needs as well in terms of how we can program for that. So those are the things that we're looking at and that's really related to the 1.8 million dollars, nearly 1.8 million dollars, that's what's considered S R three. Yeah, the social emotional learning curriculum is for everyone. And then we have certain students that are programmed either based upon their needs on a special education platform or it would be from other needs that have been identified through through our building, you know, administration and counselors and psychologists and that type of thing, so. I think the best way of describing that is based upon need and so we program for that within the buildings, what we see. I wouldn't be able to speak specifically to a health class particularly, I mean, I don't have that level of understanding of what our health classes consist of, but in terms of our social emotional learning, it's embedded throughout our curriculum, throughout our courses, so. I imagine in the health classes, there are pieces to that as well.
And wouldn't it be fair to say we probably don't have all the plans made for the S R three money, we haven't even been able to apply for it yet, so.
No, not at all.
There may be ways that we address mental health that we're not even, we haven't.
We haven't identified.
We don't have it, yeah, we don't have it.
We'll have the additional resources, so our goal is to program for that, to use it for that. Absolutely.
I have a question. So with the money coming in, I think we already have funds allocated for summer school and some of these other programs, are we able to then reassess the funds? You know, basically replacing the funds with the federal money that's coming in and being able to reallocate those funds to something else, perhaps in the case that we have to do this?
You want me to reset, her question was on. Would we be reallocating money that we've set aside for summer school? What we, what we set aside for summer school was some of this federal money. So we're gonna be reallocating that money into technology, sanitizing, just moving that, because we had set aside the S R one money for.
I'm just saying though, that we've already, you know, we purchased money from, we purchased software, purchased all these things, but we're getting money to reimburse us for those things and are we able to move money around because of that money starting to expand?
Yes, that's possible, yeah.
So I look at that, you know, S R one, two, three, now we're taking the summer school funds and I think that what your statement is, is a common one that the community would look at this and going. Wow, there's a lot of money out there. So, and then we have the governor's funding. Do we know where that formula is gonna be for this year? Do we have an inkling, I don't, you know, I know it's all over the place and all of a sudden, boom, disappeared here now. So when you look at that, 1.7 million, 795,101,086,000. You know, and you keep going down the list and then you look at the governor's funding and then we're cutting 1.991 million and we've already taken some of that money for that, I think a common community question would be. Huh? Like, seems like an awful lot of money, why are we cutting so much? Would that be, I think, kind of what they would say, so. It seems like there's a lot of unknown still as to how we could use that money, because it's pretty. It's not really specified, I mean, they're pretty big groups up there, but then there's also just the general running of the things that we normally do too, so. I think that's a big question they, the community has.
And all, and all of this appears one time money, so that's why, I mean, that's why I wanted to start the conversation. Get this out there and I will update you guys again next month and we'll keep, we'll keep talking about it and talking about what we're spending it on.
Robin, I have a question regarding, you talked about you just doing the application for the S R two funds, which is just under 800,000. How does this application process work? Do they, you have to wait to get some information from them or, I mean, is there dates when you can apply or how does that work?
It's in a program through MDE, it's called the serves program and they put it out there, it's the same place, we have our title one programs and our specialized programs. We go out there, we actually apply for it. They approve it and then we have to go out and create a budget within this program. And then that's how we get reimbursed by it, by putting this budget out there, then we put our expenditures out there, because with federal money. You have to spend the money before they'll reimburse you, so we have to prove that we've spent that money and then they reimburse us the money.
So for the S R two funds, roughly 800,000, we basically suggesting that we're gonna help offset budget cuts with half of that, 400,000.
Right, right.
And the other half, we're gonna spend it in those areas.
Correct.
Who is, who is, I mean. Who's working on exactly, I mean, there's this been brought up regarding say mental health, you know, and we've heard so much about the mental health of kids. And actually, it's so many more too, just in dealing with the pandemic, so. Is that something that you are specifically working with or do, does staff come forward and share what we try to do or, you know what I'm saying? I'm just trying to get a better picture of that other 400,000, just an S R two and S R three and then this governor's money, I guess I'm just wondering, what's the process for?
It's not just me, believe me.
Yeah, but I'm just trying.
So far, it's been, I mean, as an administrative team, we've talked about, you know, what to, what to spend that S R two money on. And then just started talking about the S R three, just because we haven't even gotten that application yet, but we, yeah, we've started that discussion. This will be a next fiscal year. You know, we won't be spending that money in this fiscal year since it's almost over.
But just to be clear, so in order to move the funds, so now that we're saying, okay, now summer school has some money here. You still have to make a case for it fitting into one of these categories. So for example, if we put some money towards our deficit. We have to be able to say we're using it for mental health or summer school or learning loss. Like, we can't just say, well, we want to add Spanish at the elementary level. I mean, you get what I'm saying, I'm saying, we still have to say how it fits into their prescribed category somehow. So for example, when we used part of it for the deficit, it's because we could say it paid some of the staff salaries of people who were distance teachers, because that met the needs during the pandemic.
Correct.
So I guess I'm just trying to point out for people who have questions, because we all do, how can we use this money? So we still have to make a case for how it fits into their categories, correct?
Yep, yep.
You know, I look at this all across the state, right? We're getting all this money and all these schools are getting all this money, I always say, you know, yeah. We do have to make sure we're accountable, but I always say, who audits that? Who comes in and every one of these schools across the state of Minnesota and audits that? I'm assuming that there are some creative. Correct, but I don't, I don't mean that we spent it, but I mean that we spent it according to pretty wide open things when I read there, there must be a lot more to it than six words for 100 and 1.7 million dollars.
Yeah, this is me trying to fit it into a spreadsheet for you to see as well.
I would hope that we would be, and I don't know who makes that decision, but it seems that people around this table are probably responsible for what happens to that money, that we would be creative and use it as. It just seems like an awful lot of money with a few words by it. And if you add up the lines, I mean, it's like two and a half million bucks. If you go down another one, I mean, it's, that's a pile of money. And we've already cut.
Actually, I mean, I just have a few words in there, but these are all the words that go in there, yeah, yeah.
Then I go back, holy cow, every school, that's gonna take a lot of people to come in and make sure.
And since it's federal money and you talk about auditing, yeah, I mean, some of the smaller districts in the, in the state, it's called a single audit and they haven't had single audits before and so it's gonna cost them more money to have these single audits, because they have to come in and have a, it's a specialized audit when you have additional federal money. So they dig a little deeper, our auditors do, when you have a lot of federal money, so.
So you're saying there is a process in place, if we would try to say, I'm not saying.
Let's just be as creative as possible to help us out.
Stay within the rules.
Eric, could you slide that up just one more?
A few things to point out on the, on the budget, so let's just talk about the budget reduction that we did. Remember that was related to the FY22 budget, so we're talking about next year's budget. And we talked about the budgeting process being an eighteen month process, because some of the budget reductions that we did were savings that we realized this year. And then some of them are related to positions that may have been reduced for, or that have been reduced for next year. So that, that's that piece, so when you look at this federal money flowing in, you're saying, well, why are you doing any reducing if you have over $2 million of funds coming in? You could have just used it all for the budget reduction. But part of it is, and again, from your world of doing the accounting of things, you're looking at a base budget that's moving forward next year. That is, that is gonna be in the red. And so there's, there's reductions that have to be made and a lot of that was related to our enrollment, so just to kind of revisit some of our conversations, we're down about a hundred students from what we budgeted and we budgeted 25 students less. And so that in itself is a loss of revenue that had to be accounted for, so that's a part of the budget reduction. And then you look at expenses also going forward, not only the loss in revenue, but you're looking at the increase in expenses going forward as well. And so when we, we talked about this in the past months, one of the things we recognized too is we're not alone in this across the state. I think from your business manager survey that we shared with the board, it was approximately eighty percent of the, the schools in the state that answered that survey were making reductions of some sort as well. The ones even had fund balances or making some level of reduction, some of them were. And then, of course, there were the, you know, schools like ours that, you know, struggled to have a fund balance that went into that scenario with having to make, you know, probably more reductions than others. Percentage wise, I don't know how we've compared to the other schools in the state that have had to make reductions as well, but just that larger picture of, you know, using that one time money for reoccurring expenses is something that we've talked about quite a bit. That we would have to make some adjustments in our, in our resource allocations in order to meet that budget in FY22, so one of the things that Robin will bring, bringing forward here in June, we do have to approve our preliminary budget for FY22. Of course, going through all of that budgeting information that we went through is, is supportive of having you be able to provide a budget for the, the board next month at the June 17th meeting. You'd be doing that preliminary budget and keeping in mind that a preliminary budget is truly that and it's probably as good as it is on that day. The next day, it starts changing a little bit and so we did this year a revised budget. And then you presented that to the board as well, so you could see that revised budget and that's many times done during the year because of how expenses and revenues are coming in compared to what you predicted back in June. And so here we are, almost to June again, and of course, the predictions had to be adjusted because just how things were coming in or not coming in, enrollment loss, those kinds of things. And so when we look at one time monies and then how that compares to what we're dealing with in our current budget that's moving forward. You know, those are, those are complicated in that sense, but we're trying to use that money as wet, as best as we possibly can to account for expenses that we had to realize because of COVID. But also to think about how we can, you know, program for summer school, how we can program for, you know, the social emotional needs that were represented. And as an admin team, you know, other things we've talked about is, and as a board, we discussed quite a bit, enrollment. So as enrollment increases, particularly in those two stress points in our, in our enrollment right now, that's third grade at TF and it's fourth grade at Lakeside, those are two places that we were pushing class size limits that we weren't comfortable with. So we, as a board, talked about that a couple of months ago and said, if that is indeed the case, that these students are coming back from Wildcat Academy and those class sizes are going to get into those ranges that we're not comfortable with, we would hire teachers to do that. So part of that would be also of these funds would be to help support hiring those teachers back. For those two stress areas in particular, and then we're keeping an eye on the enrollment at the primary school in particular in grades K and one. And right now, we've budgeted for seventeen sections there. If we had to add an eighteenth section into those two grade levels, then we'd have to have money for that as well. So those are things, just to revisit some of the conversations you've had as a board and we've talked about in terms of how, how this is all coming together. That's a big piece of it is enrollment driven and right now, what we're seeing is a, is a strong return of our Wildcat Academy students. So as we fin, finish up the school year and look at kind of where we're at in terms of numbers. We would be bringing forth a recommendation likely for us to add those two teachers, particularly at third grade in TF and fourth grade at Lakeside. But also keeping an eye on primary between K and one to make sure that those class sizes are appropriate.
Certainly lower class sizes has something to do with mental health, correct? I mean, we certainly can do that. Am I looking at four million bucks up there?
You are, yeah. There's a budgeted item for that, yeah.
I mean, I don't like point it out when I do my budget presentation or anything, but yes.
Robin, so the S R funds that go through 2024.
Yes.
So we could potentially run summer school program. So we could potentially run summer school programs.
Are there are there things we've cut that cause stress? That if we brought them back, it would decrease that stress? I don't know what they are. I mean, there's a pile of stuff we cut, but that's one pile of money. And I know we don't want to spend something that we may have to, you know, spend again on the next year and not have the budget for it, but this is kind of one time money to help bridge us through a tough time.
Keep in mind the first three numbers at the top, that little over a million dollars has already been spent. But it you're right, it is.
So we got about three then.
Yep, little under three million. Yep, that's correct.
So you say that we're we're experiencing declining enrollment, yeah?
We lost a hundred students.
A lot of our students, what do we get fifteen grand a student or something like that? About ten, so it's about a million dollars. Has any thought been given to the fact that it's likely a feedback loop? I mean, speaking of somebody who's pulled their child out of the school district for those sort of reasons. And somebody who's paying enormous levies. We try to get our friends to move to this area and they all say the taxes are way too high. And now we're talking about, I know it's a new business, but adding more taxes. But people are not coming to this area because of the taxes, which means you're only going to see declining enrollment. That's it. So if if we keep doing this, right? You're gonna have less students again. People are are finding these magnet schools charter schools and putting their kids there and those charter schools get seventy five percent of the funding that you do for that same child. But they're able to make it work and we're not. I'm just curious, you're talking about losing a million dollars this year in funding due to lack of enrollment. If anybody's putting any thought into that and also how it's affecting our communities. I've got four or five lots in my neighborhood that haven't sold for ten years on account of taxes. And and the burden that you're placing on us and our communities with this sort of shortfall situation, it's going to start feeding itself at some point. And it's going to get worse. And I'd like to see it before we start talking about more money. The two levies I've been paying on fifteen years, I won't see before I move out. And the one you're talking about adding, I won't see finished until I'm dead. You're talking about thirty years typically.
No, not in a not in an operating.
Not for an operating levy.
About ten years.
Well, there's no doubt that taxes are really high in Shisago County. Um, absolutely. And everybody who lives in lives in it realizes that. And I think there's, that's a complicated conversation as to how much that is. In terms of the voter approved levy here in Shisago, we have a two hundred twenty five dollar voter approved levy. There's, you know, comparatively to the state average, which is about a thousand per student voter approved levy. You know, we're certainly under in that regard. That doesn't make it any easier for a Shisago County resident because they have the other taxes on top of that. Um, one of the things we've talked about a lot in terms of the challenges that we have in Shisago County in Shisago Lakes in particular is just our lack of industrial um industrial properties that we have here, which spreads out that tax burden. So as you experience and I'm experiencing too and others in the room as well, you have very high residential property taxes because of that. So that's a that's a comp- you know, that's a a part of it. You know, as far as our non voter approved levies here in Shisago Lake School District, ours went down a little bit this year. Um, you know, comparatively to most that will go up, but as far as the schools non voter approved levy that went down a little bit in our percentage this year. Now, also in your taxes, you definitely see the county and you definitely see the cities as well. So all those are pieces of that tax piece. And then uh and then also property value, right, changes it as well. So as your property value goes up and that's a lot of the calls that I get that a person's property value went up quite a bit, their taxes went up, you know, proportionally with it. And that's that's always a concern for our residents. So uh definitely we hear you in terms of the it's it's complicated and challenging because of, really, I think it stems from our low commercial industrial property wealth, if that makes sense.
It sort of does, but I mean, to some extent, I I'm somewhat proud as a community that we do take care of our kids. So I don't really, taxes aren't hurting me. Right, but they have doubled in fifteen years, straight double from when I built my house to now. I'm over forty five hundred dollars versus the two thousand that I paid when I built the house. And now we're talking about adding again. And when you think about that as a percentage of, you know, not without getting into my personal home value, I'm I'm over a point, right? Pushing two. I'll be pushing two points, which is ridiculous because I'm not on the lake. And I get that it's this lack of uh industrial base and these other things, but what I'm saying is we really should be thinking about it because you're losing students because of it now. And now you're going to tack on possibly or looking to tack on some funds. But I think what everybody in this room and the reason you're seeing people crowd deals is that uh we're not spending responsibly. Look at the building we're in. Right? And the kids haven't been here all year. We're just starting to come back now and everything's good. We're spending a hundred and sixty million dollars. And that went on our taxes. And we got, we have uh Astro turf at the football field. We have a beautiful pool in a community that has like eight or ten lakes just off the freeway. But we can't afford to pay teachers. So we want to get our priorities straight. That's why I'm.
I appreciate your comments and let's just go from there because not everything you've said, you know, I let's just go from there. You you've made a good point. We all know about taxes, okay? And there's, we've got two different things going on. We have funds that have been approved by voters to build, we had sixty five million dollars. Which was approved in twenty seventeen. And then we have an operational levy that helps offset the cost of education in general, goes to our general fund. So we have, we have basically have two categories. All of our capital improvements, all of our capital investments are voter approved. And I think we're basically just the last sixty five million dollars, which is a tremendous amount for this community. Which built the Wildcat Community Center and this building, as well as did some work in Taylor's Falls. Work at the middle school. And there's some X, some leftover fund that we're actually going to spend some about four million dollars over on the primary school as well. And correct me if I'm wrong, I missed something, but you know, that was that was something that we we obviously were behind it. And it was passed by roughly fifty four, fifty five percent of the voters that voted for. And I that's on your tax rolls, that's on my tax roll. And later on, we actually have an agenda item to talk about increasing our operational levy. And when we get there, we can talk about, that's a different thing. That's a, that's essentially for general fund expenditures. And part of that discussion will be what we talked about. Our middle school program that we're down a social studies teacher and we can't have the same kind of program we would like to have. If we had that social studies teacher, we could link these kids together in these cores and it's it's really the best. It is the model for social studies or for middle schools. And that's a big discussion. And what do we do as people trying to educate our kids and to pay our teachers? And to do the best we can with what we have and to offer some raises and to work through those difficult situations. Just as we're working through very difficult situation of cutting some budgets. And that's our, that's our goal is to do the best we can. And I'm glad that you've shared. And we're gonna, you know, it's not that we don't want to be close or anything, but.
I would just add, sorry, are you?
I'm done.
I would just add a couple of things. I think a lot of us on the board would probably say what you're saying in that I would like to see school fund, schools funded in a way that we don't have to go to our taxpayers. Because first of all, there's an equity in it. Because if if the school board in Edina goes to their taxpayers and says, we need another two hundred dollars per kid. And the voters vote for it and per household, it maybe costs them ten bucks. In Shisago, we go to our people and say, we need two hundred dollars more per kid, same amount. But for our taxpayers, maybe it costs them a hundred dollars a month instead of ten or twenty. Because we don't have industrial tax base. So it's not equitable. So none of us, I don't like the system of funding schools where it depends on each district to go to their people and say, we need this money, it's got to come out of your pocket. I believe it's the responsibility of the state and federal government to fund the schools. So that's my two cents on that. And also, I've read different figures, but I think ninety two percent of the school districts in our country in United States of America public schools have lost students this year. We're in good company because people do have choices, you're right. And people have made different choices during this pandemic because there's different levels of comfort with this. And we've tried to be respectful of all of those. So I'm not making excuses and I'm fully aware of the tax situation as well. I don't think it's fair. I don't like it. I don't like that the only way we can say locally, we're not paying our people enough. We're we're having to cut programs and the only thing we can try to control, even though we can't control it a hundred percent, is to go to our taxpayers. I don't like the system. I don't want that system. I want a system where the state and federal government says public schools deserve our funding. We're going to give it, we're going to give it consistently. There are many years we didn't even get an inflationary increase. And so when you don't get an increase from the state and Fed, things cost you more locally, you fall behind. The next year, they don't give you even inflationary increase, you fall behind again because your expenses are going up. We're paying more for gas and food and salaries and insurance and we're not getting inflationary increases. So pretty soon we're behind. Because we're not getting the funding and what's our choice? Go to our taxpayers, which isn't fair either. Because our taxpayers have to pay more than other taxpayers for the same amount of money per kid. So there's a systemic problem. We're all aware of it. We don't necessarily know how to fix it, except to try to take care of our school district. And I know people have talked a lot about, you're not taking good care of your money. You're not making cuts of admin. I heard someone say, why aren't you, why didn't people take cuts? Why, why is the admin getting a raise this year? We are negotiating with our administrators right now. They have not received a raise this year. They're getting their salary from last year. We're still negotiating. And many of the contracts we've negotiated lately, we have taken out, we have negotiated out severance liabilities that have lived there for a long time. We're we're making progress in this area. Work is being done in this area. We value all of our employee groups. It would never be okay with us to say we're going to pay our admin, but we're not going to pay our teachers. We're constantly trying to watch and say, how are our employee groups doing compared to like sized districts? And right now, we aren't looking too good. Our teachers are below average. Our administrators are below average for like sized districts. Our custodians were, we tried to give them a little extra bump because we couldn't hire a custodian. We're so below average. We have salary making up to do. Our district has been short on funds. So yes, I admit, our employees deserve more. But if we're not getting increases from the state and federal government, where do we get the money to keep giving increases to our employees who sorely deserve it? So we're in this fight with you, like none of us are sitting here thinking, we don't want raises, we want to just keep going to our taxpayers. Our hands are tied too. And so I've talked too much, I've said too much, but it gives you a little bit of our story too, like I don't believe schools should be funded this way. Where we have to go to our taxpayers and the impact hurts more for you than it does for a neighbor because they have more industrial tax base. It's not fair. It simply isn't. I admit that. So that's just my.
Can I can I jump on what you said a little bit without that?
Sure.
But you know, pardon me.
Nope.
We moved here seven years ago perfectly happy and willing to pay a higher tax rate for the quality we heard came from this district. And now we're considering leaving the district because of the last year. So I really agree with your uh feedback loop problem. And, you know, you can spend the money all you want, but if it's not getting spent correctly, you're going to be losing your tax base. And I think to answer your question, the thing we need to do is make more informed both uh choices in the future to make sure we choose people that seem to be on our side. Because I'm literally changing my life right now to try to look forward to, you know, my kids having some sort of decent future. And I just see people printing up money and spending it and nothing happening, nothing changing. I see numbers on a screen, you talk inflation, well, just wait. I mean, every industry across the board right now.
So, I mean, I would challenge you to say, I mean, I hear there's frustration and I hear that you feel like we're misspending. I mean, my two kids graduated from here and I have to tell you that what they left here with has set them on a course that they were qualified to do whatever they wanted to do with their lives. Our programming is still superior. I know we've had to cut budgets because we haven't gotten the increases we'd need to maintain absolutely everything, but we still have really strong programming in Shisago. As a matter of fact, my daughter went to college and said, Mom, I'm tutoring kids from Adameeda. Kids here can be ready to compete with the best and I I believe that and I still believe that. So other people can pipe in. I don't want to argue, I I would like to know how you think that we're misspending so that we're not representing you because our programming is strong. Our kids come out of here and it's going to Saint Thomas. It's not easy to get into Saint Thomas. There she goes, she's ready to go. She got admitted there. Like, I think we need to remember, our kids are doing amazing things here in Shisago and they're still doing amazing things. So.
I have one question. I know this is to talk about how much we spend our attorney and that works with lawyers for years, but do you think there's value to spending money on having lawyers help us inform decisions? My question is, we have, there are a lot of different lawyers and some of them specifically that can go to the government, can go to regulators and to work on some of these lack of increases. So if we're going to be spending money on our lawyers, it would be great to see them doing that work. Is that happening?
Do you want to speak to schools for education?
I can. I mean, we're a part of Schools for Equity and Education and that's specifically what they do. They go and lobby at the Capitol to say, this funding formula is not fair. This way of going to our taxpayers and having it be an unlevel playing fair, our field is not fair. There are people working on it and the legislature is hearing it to some extent. Sometimes they're willing to tweak it a little bit and saying, we gotta change the way this is falling on property taxes. There's work being done in the area. It's not specifically our lawyers doing that, it's more lobbying groups doing that. Because our lawyers are more concentrated on things, contract law, like um special education law, those kinds of issues. Um, it's a good question, like it needs to be worked on. And I know there's parent groups that you can be involved in to help push it to the Capitol. Just yesterday, I emailed fifteen legislators and said, we need a different way to fund schools that's equitable. Like, we're constantly trying to work on it. Um, but that's what I know and other people can add what they know about that.
If the C schools got their legislators together and said, we're not going to pass anything until you hear us. I think that might be something that we should talk to uh our legislators that are part of our C schools. Stay woke, each one of you here, stay woke. Those people that are listening and the people that were here on four twenty and the people that are in our overflow rooms, stay woke. We need you. This is highly irregular, you know, in a school board meeting to have you ask questions and probably make some of us uncomfortable. Not me, I think it's a good thing. I think that probably it's a good thing that we are getting there. I don't know if this is a format, but what I did, I'm on the school board and I've been in this community for thirty nine years. I called the assessor. And I asked to try to explain all the parts of mine. Mine is our like seventy two hundred bucks is what I pay in taxes. So I wanted to know. I think you'll be surprised how much is school and how much is county and how much is everything, but I was a little surprised how much the sixty two, sixty three million does come out and pay for. The other thing I was, I I my, both of my kids have gone through this. Most of us have had kids go through this district. I taught here for thirty eight years. The best way we learn is with others in a classroom with things and equipment and secret and technical education. I've been over at Taylor's Falls, I've taught there subbing, I taught at the high school for thirty eight years. You have a world-class education here. The world's best workforce, we do. Go up to Northridge, I don't want to demean anybody, but they've made such budget cuts, they don't even have a current technical educator in their building. We have fifteen or sixteen, seventeen. You go to Taylor's Falls, you get into the schools, I would encourage any of you to go. And if you had kids there, you go around and you're just like, your eyes are big as saucers when you see all the things these teachers are doing. It's impressive. And the programming, and I would just beg you, don't leave. Because there's incredible things that your kids, you know, when you get in there and you work with that teacher and you got a bunch of them in this room and a bunch were here last week. And what happens that, you know, I speak it to the high school because I was there thirty eight years. I brought some people that, a guy that was an engineer at the University of Minnesota, he was kind of poo pooing what we were doing there. And I took him in and showed him what they're doing in the CAD systems. And showed him all our career and technical education. The guy goes, when I was a professor at the University of Minnesota twenty years ago, I didn't even hear of this stuff before and we're doing it. So I don't think there's any one of us, you know, I had somebody and answered this on Facebook on families. Uh, Hill Murray's a lot better than Shisago Lakes. I'll put anything we got at Shisago Lakes with Hill Murray. Plus they get sixteen thousand dollars per person. It turns out to be like ten million dollars more a year they're spending on their. Like ten million dollars more a year they're spending on their kids and we are, and they don't have career and technical ed. They don't have a turf field, which I kinda like the turf field frankly, but you know, it was a million bucks and we do have to replace that turf. But those are all things that a big school can afford. And if we were compared to the average school in Minnesota, we would be four million dollars less. And no levies than what they are. It's four million bucks. If we were Forest Lake, now I'm talking per pupil. If we were Forest Lake, we'd have three point four million dollars, but those are voter-approved operational levies. And if I'm saying something that's not accurate, please correct me on that.
I mean, I, I think what I'd like to say is that I'm not opposed necessarily to the idea of a levy.
Yeah.
But I know from being a child, one of the biggest lessons I learned from my parents is that if I have to borrow money from them, I invite them into my pocket. So if your way of doing business here is to continually come to us and ask for more money, which I'm not necessarily opposed to. You're gonna get the scrutiny that most people would give. In other words, if my daughter asked me for five hundred dollars. And then she comes around with something else, when she needed five hundred dollars, I'm gonna ask her why she didn't pay me back. And now you want however much money to operate, totally fine, I get it. But we're looking from the outside saying, well, we don't see that every corner's been cut before you do that. And I would also add that a lot of us are in the trades and you're talking away, taking away technical education. Most of the people that live here work somewhere else. Cause you can't afford to live here and work here too, cause there's nowhere to work, right? So I, I wanna make sure that I'm informed about how you're spending my money, because you're gonna ask me for more. And I may be okay with paying it, it may not, but what says that I'm not the person that leads? The no referendum, right? And then what do you do? If we in this room aren't happy with what you're doing, I hear you're saying, maybe you're in charge a little. But I can go out and lead a vote that says no, and then you'll have to make harder decisions. So instead of doing that, why don't we do a better job of convincing me why I should vote yes? Why it's important to me that you're spending the money properly and that my student is gonna get the benefit of it. I don't feel like we're doing a real good job of that in this community. I feel like a lot of these levies get passed by a shoestring and you say five percent is the margin, but really that's two and a half brings you to zero, right? It's not very many people to vote the other way. You're, you're really close to losing our support as a community. And that should be an indictment of what you're doing. Regardless of what you say about how good our community is or how good our program is. You don't have to support your community by like this much. So I'm coming in here saying, please, if you want my money, you're gonna get my scrutiny too. And I'm just not happy with the way it's going. And I don't think I'm in the minority there. And I think a lot of people just don't have the time to come here and tell you they're not happy. And we moved this meeting. I think there would have been more people here if this meeting had gone according to schedule. So I don't know if that was on purpose or not, but it looks disingenuous given the way these last few months have gone down. It really does. And you can say what you want about that, but it doesn't look good for you. And we all have busy schedules. You know, I'm missing something with my daughter to come here and try to hold people accountable. And I just, I don't like the way that's going. So fine, if you need more money. But do a better job of communicating why and maybe you wouldn't find yourself in that position. You know, I, this is what it is, right? Everybody has to vote levies. But I've done a lot of work in that and they have a huge tax base, not just industrial. There's a lot of people with a lot of money there. They're paying a lot of taxes and so they have nicer things.
I'm also gonna say there are inequities in the pay groups. And I know that that's not a popular thing and it might be in the minority, but it's inequitable. And all you do, I think many of you know that. There are difference between our custodians and our pairs and our admin and our teachers and the people that we pay. We've had many discussions about that. We do need to attract and retain good people and there are inequities. I don't. It's just the way it is. And there are inequities that are, that I know that. Laurie, you and I have talked and you're working towards that thing and I want the whole board to be on that same thing. We pay severances that are out of hand. I'm sorry. That's just the way it is. We pay health insurance. That is out of hand that costs us a lot with a certain group. And I know that's an unpopular thing, but to kinda cover it up is not right either. That needs to change. Well, and I, okay, I won't.
You know, the thing.
Go there. We need to do better in that area.
You know, about seventy percent of our budget is salaries and benefits. Some forty million dollars, seventy percent of that salaries and benefits. It's based on contracts that have been going on and on. Our biggest, the biggest. Group is our teacher union, about two hundred and twenty, somewhere in that. And every two years we work to negotiate a contract with them. And it's not easy work to be on this side. To say, this is what our, this is what we have and, and to. Talk to Jeff and Sheila and Cheryl and, and their negotiating committee and try to come to agreement and find. Some way to go forward where we, they understand that this is what we can give and this is. A, a hopefully acceptable at least for two years. And we are falling behind because we. We're, we're living on a two hundred and twenty dollars or whatever it is excess levy, a levy. An operational levy that was passed roughly around twenty-ten. The government did some things to change it and it had to actually be re-passed. A couple of years later, which was done. That's the last time we've come to the, the population, our population for extra money. For operations. That expires in twenty-twenty-four and it's two hundred and twenty-five dollars per pupil. If we don't ask for even to renew that, we lose that. And there is no inflationary factor in it. So what's two hundred and twenty-five dollars per pupil from twenty-twelve versus today? Well, it's a lot less. And as districts have had, literally had to rely on these funds. To actually survive or else cut to bare bones, which is what Jeff has suggested in North Branch, which it is. And I, I don't know the exact details, but they don't have a lot of things. And if you look around too, you can see, you know, you talked about being in the trades. I'm in the trades too. And I know exactly what's going on and trying to find some people to help, but the, there is such a shortage of workers now or whatever's happening. I don't know, but. Every place wants to hire someone. And so if we have a, a contract to hire a custodian for fourteen bucks an hour, which isn't very much. And I, and they can go up to Arby's and fourteen bucks an hour or wherever. You know, there's been this big clamor for fifteen dollars an hour minimum wage, just whatever you go now and you can make fifteen bucks an hour. So. All of that work to try to get to fifteen bucks an hour, well, it's there for whatever reason. Worker shortage, people don't wanna work, everybody, every place you go, there's please hire. You know, we're gonna hire somebody, but who's gonna go there? Nobody's even, every place has now hiring. Or I was driven by, what's his name, very recontract. We wanna hire subcontractors. They can't get anybody. So.
Unemployment right now is paying sixteen an hour, so how much?
Well, right, absolutely.
To give up sixteen.
Right, I know that. And, and that's, you know, right. So there's a point that, you know, if we wanted to continue the discussion, but we're not gonna do it for much longer. But the very, that's a very point and, and what you brought forward. That's, that's, you know, and just where are we headed as a people, as a nation is what we're doing. And we're, we're just trying to work a school system in rural Minnesota. And keep it going and make it as good as it's been and try to improve it and deal with what we have.
I do think we do need to be, uh, do a better job of communicating. No, I don't think there's any person that. Doesn't think that and transparency and accountability, but I gotta be honest, I don't think. We're mismanaging money. I do think we do have less than other schools to spend and I can. I think we've shown that, but I think what happened is, you know, we'd have one or two people. Show up and, and it's hard to communicate to ten, twelve, fifteen thousand people. I think. You know, even Mr. Fairchild, when I try to get what's going on there to all the parents to help understand all those things, it is, we, we have to overly, overly communicate. Because you'll be here now and then there'll be another ten thousand people that won't hear. But we've been talking about this. I really do believe we're underfunded. But I also know our taxes are very high. So how do you balance those things out? But if there's something you wanna know. I do think every board member ought to respond to you. And if you have something you wanna know, I think Mr. Call, uh. Get a message to Mr. Janison and to Superintendent Janison or any school board member and we ought to be able to answer those emails. And please do that. Like I said, stay woke, stay here with us. And then you tell twenty and you all tell twenty people and pretty soon. We got a community that's empowered and we feel like we can do something for our kids, but we have wonderful schools. And like I said, if you don't think so, let's give you a tour. Come on in and see what's going on. I know you, your kids love your teachers and love your programs. But come on in because I think you'll be shocked as to what's going on and what's coming here too. And I hope we can change this so we can bring some of these things back. We have excellent staff. They're wonderful people. And, and those of you that have kids in those programs, I know you feel that same way. But we do need to do a better job to retain and attract good teachers, because we've lost a lot of good teachers when you go. Somewhere else and make twenty grand somewhere else. They're leaving too. And yeah, everybody. And less talks, you know, but. It's a big problem, multifaceted, many inputs, but we do need to be better communicators and open, kinda both ways too, tell us. Please come and tell us and then let us do a better job of communicating back. I think the onus is on us to do that. And I think we need to do a better job. However, that is, I don't know. But we do need to do a better job.
Well, why don't we move forward? I, I know that, you know, and someone mentioned this. Normally you don't involve people. In the board meetings, because it's a business meeting. And then we're here to conduct business, but. It's my discretion to allow it. And I don't have a problem with it. But we also have to conduct some business now. So why don't we just go forward with that? Appreciate what you've shared. And it's a, you know, that whole funding thing is very, very complicated. Like that two hundred and twenty-five dollars. It used to be more, it was four hundred something. But then the government, there were some districts that could never even pass a levy. North Branch is one. They've never, they've tried, they never even passed a levy. So through lobbying to the government. The, the state legislature and then the, and the governor, they came up with something. Five, six, seven years ago where they, they called it non-voter approval levy. So they allowed every district in the state of Minnesota. To not have to actually ask for this money from their voters. It was about half of what ours was. So our levy instead of the four hundred eighty-five dollars or whatever it was voter-approved levy is now only two hundred and twenty-five. The other, we just automatically get. And so that allowed some of those districts that were really struggling to get some funds. And North Branch is one of those. There's others that are that, maybe only about a ten or twelve in the whole state of three hundred some districts. Have never passed an operational levy. But at the same time. Forest Lake struggled for years and years and years and years without one, or was it so low? I don't know.
They, they've defeated it many times and now if we had their levy, we'd have three point four million dollars more a year.
Their levy is like a thousand dollars a pupil, twelve hundred. It's, it's, it's a significant number more than ours. So all of a sudden Forrest Lake went from difficult, 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 cuts, cuts, cuts. Big classes, big classes, then they finally just a year or two ago passed that levy. And now all of a sudden they have much more money per student than we do. So. But anyway. Let's go forward and, and try to get the rest of our work done this evening. We have some enrollment figures up in, under communications, but they're roughly around about thirty-three hundred students, not, no significant changes.
Yeah.
So then we'll go on a superintendent update.
Yeah. So a few things that'll probably connect to the conversations we've been having tonight, but one of the things I like to do with the board each week. When I, I email them an update when we don't have meetings is just give a little bit of COVID update. So in the district, we've had. You know, good, I guess a good couple of weeks of not so much COVID in our schools in terms of students positive and then quarantine now. One of the things I've talked to parents a lot about through email, um, that I've gotten ahold of me is just the quarantine guidelines did not change anywhere throughout this scenario. Since day one, the quarantine guidelines have stayed the same. And so I mentioned this last month, but when we. When we had the change in December from the governor saying, hey, go ahead and. Open up in January and that type of thing, the quarantine guidelines did not change with that. So when we have a student in an elementary classroom who needs to be quarantined. The rest of the class gets quarantined as well. And of course, that's where I hear quite a bit from parents being frustrated with that. So you're taking out twenty-seven students for that one student. Parents have asked, they said, well, how many students actually became positive because of that one student? And then I would say the numbers there are very minimal. We, we don't really have cases of that happening. The challenge though is that MDH and MDE have not changed anything for us. So we still operate under the same guidelines and people have said, well, why don't you just challenge that and just. Not even do it. And the problem with that is, and, and we did this as a board and Laurie was part of this, working with the commissioner of the education. We went to him and said, what if we didn't follow the guidelines? And they said, you know, we would, uh, we would be not getting our funding then. Well, we can't operate without our, with our, without our state and federal funding. We don't have that kinda money to be able to do that. And so. That, that is where we're at in terms of quarantines. It's not something where. We have a, where we have the ability just to go against the guidelines. And so the quarantines still stay in place and the frustration with that lately has been the mask mandate. So we'll talk about that later on in terms of what the masking means here in Chisago Lakes. But as you saw from the governor's announcement about two Thursdays ago, you know, it was, we're gonna be changing the mask requirements, that type of thing. Well. The one thing he neglected to say in his initial announcement, it was, at least I didn't, I didn't think I heard it was. This doesn't change anything for schools. Schools still need to operate with a mask mandate during the day. Um, and they need to continue to do that up and through the last student contact day and then for staff through the last staff day. Now, this past week, they came out with some graduation guidance that says, now, if it's after, if your graduation ceremony is after school hours. Outside of the school's operational day, you don't have to wear a mask for graduation. And so those things are, I mean, these are all confusing things for our communities when these different guidelines come out, these different mandate. Announcements and stuff come out. And so our, uh, our situation is one where even though we have low COVID. Right now in our schools, we still have to continue to wear the mask and that type of thing. Last week, our quarantine numbers were down by a hundred students, which was great. Um, and that's a good thing overall because we're keeping everybody in school, which is where we wanna be in face-to-face programming. So. It's been, been a good couple of weeks that way, but unfortunately, and I say this to this group, but also to those that are listening, we have to continue to wear the mask. In school through the last day of school. And there hasn't been anything that's gonna change that to this point. So. That's what we've been told by the commissioner and, and that's what we have to follow. So we're, we're doing that. Summer programming guidance is coming out on May twenty-eighth. And so we'll know more about what the requirements are gonna be during the summer months. When we do our summer school programming. And we do know from our enrollment that part of the problem, challenge for parents was to start the year and why we had a. Uptick in, in homeschool parents and students was because of the mask mandate. So. Many have asked, you know, what is the plan gonna be for next year? And you know, the, the guidance there for this point is what it is right now. We certainly hope as a school district and as a school board that we don't have any requirements on us coming in the fall. That would be our ideal situation, that we don't have any requirements on us. That would require masks or social distancing or anything else. And so we can't predict where that'll be by the end of the summer. Hopefully there won't be anything, but I guess our, our challenge is, is working within those mandates unfortunately. And that's not, that's not something that. Uh, we really have the ability to fight against other than to continue to talk to the commissioner and talk to the people involved and say, hey, this is, you know. This is what we're seeing in our schools. And one of the things I mentioned to people the last couple of weeks is we, our county number was around fifty. A couple of weeks ago, we should have been on distance learning throughout our district. But we were in, in-person learning because we as a district lobbied to stay in that model and to get into that model in February. And so we're thankful that we can still continue to be in school. Uh, but we can't lobby our way out of the mass, unfortunately. I don't think anybody in this room wants to keep any mask mandates, so.
Well, yeah.
Let's, yeah.
We get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's keep moving.
Yeah. Well, it's not a brushing off. We don't have the ability to tell MDH and MDE that we're gonna secede from the, from the, uh, from the school's funding. You know, we are a part of the public school system. So I hear you. I don't think anybody here.
Yeah, but.
With what money?
I, I don't know what they're winning.
Are we supposed to file a lawsuit or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the one thing that was asked about the legislative update, where we're at with the, um, with the funding at the state level right now. Uh, what was given to the majority leader Gazelka and the, and the speaker Hortman. Uh, they need to work out this five hundred and twenty-five million dollar equation that was given to them to figure out. So that's where things sit right now. Um, as Laurie said, and people have asked, what can you do? You know, one of the things is continue to email our legislators and the people who are making these decisions. And. Right now, what we're asking them to do is to consider two percent and two percent for the student funding formula on that formulary allowance for each student. And so it's not two percent of a forty million dollar budget. It's two percent on top of the. About sixty-five hundred we get for a base on each, each elementary pupil. And then you have the levy and other things on top of that, but. Um, what we're asking them to do is to add it two and two in the next two years and then put an inflationary increase on there as well. We'll see what the legislature chooses to do with that. They're not gonna make any decisions. They need to put their targets in place by June fourth apparently. So we, we sit and wait kind of, and at the same time, we have to put out a, a preliminary budget on June seventeenth for our district for next year. So that's kinda that challenge right now with that piece, but that's what's happening in the legislature right now. I don't have anything else unless. I don't have anything else unless board members have questions about about those things, but that's that's where we are.
I can just piggyback on that, that I actually got an email back from Senator Gazelka last night because I had emailed him about, we needed two percent each year. And he did, his words are, we provided the amount that the education targets agreed to. Now the Senate and House have to agree to spend what to spend the money on. And he said, I personally support the two and two, we'll see what happens, but that was good news that he's supporting it.
Yeah, and just a reminder for the board and everyone listening, we we budgeted with the FY twenty-two budget, we budgeted one percent and one percent. So if they were to give two percent, you know, that would certainly be, you know, a good thing for us overall as a district.
Okay, well. Appreciate that, and I wanted to just thank you, Lori, for all that extra work that you do all the time, just lobbying on behalf of our schools. And being a, just doing a great job. So let's move forward on just, it's not any board committee updates, but it's really to discuss the school board eval, self-evaluation, and Lori was going to speak to that.
So after our last board meeting, someone had brought up the idea that maybe we need to, as a board, work on work on ourselves. And so I've contacted the Minnesota School Board Association and just got some information for us to consider, and we get to decide about this. But the Minnesota School Board Association will help us as a school board do a self-evaluation. And what you do is you fill out a questionnaire in its areas of conduct and ethics, vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy and communication. And so we all hand in our individual evaluation, but this is not an individual self-assessment, they're assessing our entire board as a whole. And we have two options then, they can take all of our results and compile them. And they can either just hand us one sheet that says, here's how everything came out. Or option two is, they have an MSBA person who will come out and work with us like in a working session and say, here's some areas that maybe your school board where you got some low ratings, where you have some work to do. And they'll come and work through our our results with us if if we so choose. And usually they said it takes two to three hours, they'll come out and we'll plan a day where it'll be like a working meeting. There is a cost that comes with the second one, which is the person from the Minnesota School Board Association coming out and going over this comprehensive comprehensive report with us. And so we need to decide as a school district, do we just want the one-page results of all of our answers? Will that help us to move forward? Or do we need another party coming in and saying, let let me help you through this together? So that's what we need to consider, Jody did attach the information to your board book if you want to look at it.
Cost is roughly just a little under a thousand, as far as I know.
Yep, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars if we do the comprehensive report and we have the person come in service with us. So that will be something we'll have to decide, we don't have to vote on it tonight. But I just got the information in case we decide to pursue this as a school board to see how we can grow and build. So that's the information I have. Any questions about that?
I don't think there is anything else in regards to committee updates we haven't met at all on anything that I know of. We do have a Wednesday morning session with our principals and negotiations session, so. That's coming up, I don't know if there's anything else at that point. Well, let's move on to our consent agenda, which is essentially just a boilerplate approval of the minutes from the last two meetings. The money that have been spent on all the things there are claims and accounts and some investments. There's personnel items, there's resignations and some terminations, I don't think any termination, just those resignations, there's a leave of absence, retirement, some employment contracts, and then there's some transportation reimbursement requests. These are all printed out, but normally our treasurer, Brandon Carlson, reviews all of these items with our Director of Business Services and and goes through the budgets and and the payouts. And we also have those as as board members to look those over as well. So. That being said, I'd look for a motion and a second and approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda.
Any discussion or any questions from anyone? Being none all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. Motion passes. All right, moving on to all business, the first item up is to discuss pursuing a twenty-twenty-one fall operational levy.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, in light of the fact that we have two board members missing and we're making a decision, probably one of the biggest decisions we make as a school board all, I mean, in my career, is whether or not to go out for an operating levy. I feel a level of discomfort that four of us are going to make this decision for a group of six that would normally be sitting here. So I would just like to throw up the possibility of tabling the discussion about deciding about an operating levy until we have our full board here. It just feels like it's a pretty big decision when we're missing two board members. I'd like to hear what the rest of you have to say, but I would like to make a motion that we consider tabling this discussion until our board is here.
Second.
Discussion regarding this. I think it's very, I I think it's true, and I, you know, we're, gentleman back here was sharing about you know, it's not just a matter of levy, it's a matter of amount. Plus, what's it going to be spent for? What are we going to use it for?
Our plan, yeah.
And. So we have not, we have thought of this for quite a while. This hasn't just come up in the last months, it's been thought about for quite a while, some years now. And when Jeff was with Clem, we talked often about Clem wants to support what we're going to do, we have to determine what makes a reasonable sense to go forward. And it's a really difficult time right now with post-COVID, with thousand, a hundred students less, et cetera. And we know that we've been struggling with communications and we've been a lot of people are criticizing us for being open or lack of open openness, et cetera. And whatever we do, it will take some time to get there. So what we were hoping to do was to discuss whether to go out for an operational levy this fall. And it would be my intent that we would have a full board or certainly not four members here on the June seventeenth meeting and make a decision at that point. Any further discussion? But just to make a decision to go for an operational levy, that's one thing, to figure out what, how much to go for. What are people support, what they want?
We have all that to.
But there is some timeframe, we're we're really, there's a, there's a window, or there's only, I think, by the middle of July, we have to make a decision, or is it?
Seems to me we just have to have more time than what we can devote to it in a in a open meeting, a regular school board meeting, is there a way to maybe have a work session where we could spend some time and what if, whether we should and then how much that should be and what the thing should be used for? And I mean, if we look at June seventeenth and then you got another month and then you know, I hate to have more meetings, but I also think it's really important we do the people's business.
I think so too, I think a working session to discuss the levy and make a plan is a really good idea. I'm just wondering though, timing of it, do we have to have the decision first as a full board that we're going to have a levy before we go into a planning session?
I don't know.
We just talk about it, we just talk about the whole thing at a working session, you think, Danny?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so maybe sometime between now and our next board meeting, we set a date for a working meeting? Does that seem reasonable?
That's fine, I I was. My other thought would be, we need some recommendation from administration. Mr. Fairchild just said, you know, a month ago, he had five hundred thousand, I don't know, what it was, four ninety-five, he'd have, he could run a middle school the way he would want to. And we, we would need, we would need to know, well, what does that mean?
Yeah.
And is that what our public wants to support?
I think we need some recommendations from the parents, custodians, food service, and teachers as well. I think we need everybody's input, and you know what? We serve this group of people here and a whole bunch of people that are watching and a bunch of people that aren't here, we need their input too. We need to know what you want, what do you see, what do you want to know more about? And then I think we need to somehow, and and that's a big task in a month, or less than a month, because here we are, you know. But I gotta, we gotta, we have to listen and we have to hear what you have to say and what you, what kind of input you want us, where do you want us to to go with this?
So can we vote on the tabling the decision about the fall levy since we have a motion in a second? And then we can move on to when can we plan a working session to discuss the details, does that seem sound reasonable? So we need.
We have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second to table it, which you may want to withdraw your motion. And I could withdraw this, the second.
The tabling motion?
Did you want to table it or did you want to or to consider having a levy in the fall? I don't know what you, what what did you just say prior to?
I said table.
Okay.
I was thinking.
So you want to table it until we can have a work session?
That's what I was.
Okay, all right.
Right, it it's it's not a motion regarding a levy, it's a motion regarding.
Tabling.
Then I call for the question, let's go ahead and.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign, motion passes, all right. Piggybacking to this is the next question, the next item for discussion. Which is to reconsider the levy consultant agreement. Just so that you know, we have consulted with person that is, we contracted to do the survey. And we've asked them to put on hold anything that they've done, which they have. And we are paying, we owe them roughly thirty-five hundred dollars for the work that they've done already, which is to produce the survey and to share it with the board and others so that we can get a feel for what they're asking. Todd Rappin Associates, the man that, the firm that we were hiring to help us to market and communicate regarding eleven Ps has also been consulted to hold off any further work. And they have done that as well, so.
We owe them any money?
Roughly two months of our agreement, which is about seven thousand dollars, so there's roughly ten thousand dollars that it is.
What did they do?
I'm not sure what to say, I know what the survey company has done, I'm not sure what Mr. Rapp and his associates have done.
Is there, did he get a detailed list of what they've done or?
Yeah, he's worked directly with the survey person, so we've had multiple meetings with the two of them to develop the current draft survey that's available.
And they're on a monthly.
They're on a monthly is what we signed with them, but they would hold off on that as well.
So we've asked them to hold, so if we table the decision about whether to keep our agreements with them as well, till we've made our decision about our levy, does that make sense to the rest of the board to say we've asked them to hold? We'll decide about them once we decide about the levy, because otherwise it would be backwards, right? To decide if we're going to use the consultants and we don't even know what we're going, if we're going to go out for a levy.
Well, I asked that it be put on the agenda to rescind the agreements that we had. What does it take to do, I mean, it sounds like we have ten thousand five hundred dollars invested in a survey, correct? And what does it take to? Seven thousand and thirty-five hundred? Ten five.
I'm sorry.
So then what does it take, how much more does it take to do the survey, number one? Number two, I don't think our staff or community really are in support of spending any more money on this.
To do the survey, the the survey that was that we commissioned was one where they have their people do the calling of different voter demographics. So it's not just a survey where you put out a link to a survey and anybody who wants to take it can take it. They actually, they actually target, you know, each of those voter demographics within our in our populace, and then they go until they get a certain amount of survey respondents in all those areas, so.
Any idea what it would cost to finish it?
Well, I think it was a sixteen thousand dollar contract.
It was, the the majority of the cost comes from the work that's done by the field people who do the calling. Yeah.
And then analyzing.
So for us to do it on our own, I don't know how that would.
Yeah, all I wondered was if we, you know, we have, is it that we have ten thousand five hundred invested in a sixteen thousand dollar deal? I always thought that it's really more than that to complete.
The survey, there are two different contracts. Rapp and Associates was an ongoing monthly contract until the time of a of a vote. Basically per month to do marketing and communications with us. And and consultation in any way we needed. Then the Peter Leatherman, the survey firm, was to do a scientific survey, a phone survey, I believe.
Right.
A a scientific phone survey with our total population to get information from specific demographic groups. So out of that would be, I don't know how many percentage of people living here have students in our schools. But whatever it is, they would, if we say it was twenty-five percent, I don't think it's that high even, but if it's, whatever it is, they would target twenty-five percent of their survey results would become, would come from specifically that demographic. Then it would break it up, I think, in the age socioeconomic, I don't, I don't know the specifics. But what they would be able to do then is to come back and say, this is what your population in your school, this year, voting population feels. Well, this is what they, this is how they answer the survey. And I don't know if you had a chance to look at the survey?
I haven't sent it out to the whole group yet because I was waiting for this conversation to be taking place.
Survey has been generated.
Yeah. So I guess my question is, we have ten thousand five hundred invested, what does it take to complete the survey? And not, I don't know, which one does the survey is on leather? So Rapp is more of the consulting after the fact?
Throughout the, throughout the process.
And throughout it too.
Yeah.
This is really tough, you know, because when I hear staff and spoke to many staff and many people in the community, they just don't like the idea of spending forty-five thousand, now we have ten five. It was going to be about forty-five thousand, isn't that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And so we have, you know, twenty-nine, five here left, I guess, or something like that, or whatever.
Yeah.
Well, fifteen, I guess it's fourteen, forty or thirty.
Thirty-five, roughly.
Yeah, which, I don't know.
Well, Jeff, perhaps what we've talked about was, first of all, there's no continual, the the funds, the charges have stopped until we make a decision.
Sure.
So if we're going to have a working session to talk through the levy itself, what we should do at that point is talk through this as well. And make a decision based on what makes sense. And and even what makes sense for this year, for instance, what if we decided this year wasn't the right time because of the shortness of time and the things we're dealing with? Maybe it would still be good to consider the survey to get a feel for the community and forget the consultant. But we need, we need to have this working session first.
Well, then what do you say we hold off on the motion to rescind? Until we get a chance where all six of us could sit down and and everybody else that's involved in that process to make that decision, and then at least we're not spending more money between now and then. Is that, I think, that sounds like a consensus?
So we need, did I make a motion to table the discussion about the levy consultants?
No.
There's not a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to to table that as well until we've had the discussion about the levy, so.
I think we're just okay, aren't we? Or do you think we need to have a motion? My motion, I wanted it to rescind a motion, I think, if if you've already kind of made the decision to not spend more money and it didn't need a motion, why don't we just hold off to discuss that until we pick up the table, the agenda?
That sounds fine.
Is that okay?
Sure, that seems fine.
So then, as long as we're discussing it, what, when would make sense to have this working session? First week of June?
I mean, we need to make sure. I mean, we need to make sure Brenda's through her softball sections because that's what's keeping her away. She's the head coach.
See what that schedule looks like.
Yeah.
Let me, yeah, let me check with you as a board member to try to find that, probably an evening session, right? And we were thinking, you know.
Anytime before the seventeenth, I just don't think we can accomplish all that we have to accomplish.
Well, you can't.
By the seventeenth.
Our board business.
Where you have a ton of other business to cover. So can we, let's see, do we have to set the date tonight? No, we can, we can check with our people.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check in with you. I mean, we've got, we've got commencement that will all be out on the seventh. We know that that night's out. And then we, we see where other things land, but I'll work with you to secure that date.
Okay.
Get that posted.
Okay.
Alright. So moving forward, a new business, there's a second reading of the meal price increase. Robin, can you speak to that or is there any?
Sure, yep, there's no change to it. Laura Searsen, our food service director, brought that to you last month. Um, keeping breakfast costs the same for next year, increasing lunch prices by ten cents. Um, and everything else staying the same. Just trying to keep up with costs a little bit there.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion? This then is the final reading and means it will be approved. No discussion, call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Next up would be an MOU for QCOM and.
We, we have Janelle Herman available to just give some description there. And I think on your board book, you should have what the actual changes were. Uh, so you don't have to necessarily go through every page of the fifteen-page document, but there's, but there are the highlighted changes for you as a board to consider. We are, we are recommending approval, but if Janelle, if you're on, you can speak to the highlights that you provided for the board.
I am on and um, as Mr. Jensen said, I, I didn't prepare like a, a presentation. You have the MOU in front of you. Um, most of it is just updating dates, changing. Um, Clem President to Presidents. Um, we did some, some minor tweaks in some, the way that some of the positions are hired. The way that some of the positions are evaluated. Uh, the biggest changes. Um, and the reason why I wanted to bring this to you now as opposed to waiting till June was um, the addition of a position. And I believe you can find that on page seven. This is a position that would take some of the responsibilities out of the director position. And create a separate standalone position, particularly looking at the financial piece. And being able to give that um, more time and attention than. What is feasible for me to do, um, running the program. Um, it also gives another teacher an opportunity to have a leadership position, which is also one of the core components of the QCOM program. Um, this one is unique in that it would be uh, kind of a behind, behind the scenes position. And in order to fund that position, I am voluntarily taking the stipend. Amount out of my salary. So, because the duties would no longer be mine. So whoever's doing those duties should receive that funding. Um, so that's one change to my position. Uh, this, whoever would take this position, um, I would work very closely with them the first year. So that they felt confident and comfortable. Um, and then in their second year, the expectation is that they will be able to. Um, not need that, you know, side by side, but to just take more of the leadership. As a team, as opposed to um, one person.
So is Clem approve the changes?
Yes, um, oversight reviewed all of the um, changes, made their recommendations. Um, and voted to approve on April thirteenth. Um, and then it was given to Clem. Uh, Clem leadership to review, presented to Clem as a whole, and they voted to approve at the end of April.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Just having the information laid out.
The only other significant change, sorry.
That's alright.
Um, the only other significant change that I would um, call attention to is on page nine. Traditionally, we have listed the actual dollar amount um, for the stipends. But in the past three years, our funding from MDE has been prorated. And we haven't always known what that proration amount was. So instead, I recommended that we publish the calculation formula. So all membership would be clear about how that stipend is calculated. And the oversight team um, has our working budget. And we will review that right away at our September meeting, once we have all of those uh, definite numbers from MDE. And be able to give membership their actual dollar amounts um, on or before October first.
Alright, thank you. Are there any questions? Do you have a motion? I don't even remember.
No, no.
Okay, let's, we need a motion and a second to approve this.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Any other discussion or questions? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion passes. Okay, um, some policy issues, policy eight oh eight face coverings.
Yeah, I can talk to that.
Okay.
The policy committee um, met and discussed. Uh, the COVID face covering policy that we adopted last August. Uh, with the recent announcement from the governor on the changes to the mask mandate. We just wanted to make sure that the entire board discusses this for possible action on changes to our mask policy. If we don't do anything, the policy's still in place. So we can keep it until we decide to redact it or amend it. We can amend the policy. Which would basically replace the words must wear a mask with may. Because if we don't still have that optional language, masks would be against our uh, clothing policy. Unless it's for religious purposes. So, um, yeah.
So you're trying to give people the personal choice. So once the mandate's off, if someone wanted to keep wearing a mask, you're saying that's okay.
Yeah.
But you don't have to, unless the guidelines mandated.
Exactly, okay.
So what I see here is essentially a, a redaction of everything that we had in there except of about three different things. Is that correct? There's um. It was the may, we may, people may wear a face covering.
Yep.
Okay. And then we allow that, we'll allow face coverings on two A. For any employees, students, or other persons, including visitors, guests, etc. If they choose to wear a face, that to help stop the spread of COVID nineteen or any variants. So I'm assuming that's um, specific to COVID nineteen and variants.
Right.
Okay. Item number one, purpose of this policy is to allow for those things, okay? And then I noticed that they. There was one other point that is, oh, it's something down a ways. It had, it had to do with distance learning. And I don't know if you remember that or if you just, it, in five F, it says it's schools who may make available distance learning. To its enrolled students who may be medically vulnerable or otherwise unwilling to return. So in other words, that, previous to that, it said we will, which was, which was what we were directed to do by the government now. We may or may not.
Right.
Yeah, there's no longer requirement.
So I just know, and I, alright, so then a question would be. If um, someone comes up and says to us, I'm medically vulnerable, I need distance learning, we will do that or we won't?
No, we, we have to have a program for next school year, the, distance learning is optional.
And so. We're going to have enough of.
We're, we're not going to have a distance learning program next year at this point for K to five or even six to eight. We are considering some options at the high school because we've had some things in place to support that. So the answer to that is, is we are not offering distance learning next year.
Essentially, we would say, no, we, we won't be doing, because even though it says we may make available that.
Yeah, we.
Okay.
Yeah, if we had the option to do that, but right now we're not, we're not exploring that option for K to, K to eight.
Where are you reading that?
It's in, it's in.
Five F. So on the bottom of page, or the top of page five, that eight oh four, eight oh eight, five, whatever. Want to see mine?
It's.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Okay, yeah. The last item.
Okay.
So I don't know if you, I mean.
We didn't, I guess, Dorothy, I don't know if we discussed that point. We're more focused on.
Yes.
No, and I, I get it. I just wondered how, what that means to our constituents, because this would still be in the policy.
The reason that we changed it to May is because if it's not mandated, we're not gonna say must. So we didn't want to take it out because we want to leave it to the board to decide what they're going to do. And right now, we don't have enough clear direction of what's gonna happen moving forward. So that's why we took, took the word must out and put in May. So it's at the board's discretion on what they want to do with programming, so on and so forth. We didn't want to just take it completely out. Which again, if the board would like to do that, we can.
Well, I don't know. I'm just asking because it's, if it's in there, will it hold us somewhat re- responsible? To do it or simply, if we're saying May, it would say no, but then we're kind of leading people to think that, well, I have a vulnerable child or something. So I would like to, and then we say, well, we don't have a program.
If the board would like to take that whole sentence out, we certainly can do that. That's the board's discretion. That's just what the committee just put May because the high school might, other areas might not.
I think it gives you options that you don't have to, or you. Take it out, but it's probably fine in.
Yeah, because if the high school can potentially offer something to a kid who's medically vulnerable.
Right.
We may be able to provide it for some kiddos and maybe not for others. Correct, because currently we have to provide it, but we won't have to going forward, so.
One other change that we did keep in there that I just want to point out is, we are saying if somebody is going to wear a face mask, they must wear it properly. So that is the only must that we kept in there. Again, it's the board's discretion if they want that taken out, but we decided if you are going to wear a facial covering, a face mask, you must wear it the proper way. So that must did not get changed to a May.
And just to recall for the board, going back a few months, we, we brought forth a proposal at that time. We were hoping to be able to offer a distance learning program, K to twelve. But there were a lot of barriers at MDE where they required a certain amount of staffing and certain licensure for staffing. So if you remember, we. We backed off on that because we wouldn't be able to get that approved. And then since then, the legislature has talked about it um, in this, in the Department of Education has talked about it. And they're not making it mandatory that people offer distance learning, but they want to leave that option open to school districts who feel they can offer distance learning. Um, and, and really the challenge for that, us really comes down to staffing. Because how are we gonna carve out staffing for uh, those positions? And what we found at the K five level is most of, most of the students, nearly almost all the students that were in Wildcat Academy. Are coming back into our schools. So that really isn't a need. That doesn't mean there's not a parent out there who wouldn't want that or, or would like that option. But you'd have to find the staffing to go with it as a board. And then when you look at it in grade six through eight, it's a similar story in terms of we've got a lot of returning. Doesn't mean there might not be a, a somewhat of a need there, but we don't know how we'd be able to staff that. At the high school, there's certainly some options there because we've created a lot of our curriculum to be uh, in the school ag kind of online format. Plus, we've worked with Edgenuity through, for our credit recovery and whatnot. And that seems to work pretty well at the high school level. So with the high school, there's potential there because of some of the things we've already done, but also we can sometimes schedule overloads. And those are ways that we can help support a student who might want to be in distance learning at the high school level, either, whether, either full or probably mostly part-time. Because some want the part-time options too. And there's ways you can program for that. So that's what, that's what we're thinking in that regard right now. Um, but leaving it in as a May, I think, and again, Mark, I think it's a fair question, does it require you then to do it? It doesn't lead you to requiring you to do it, but it does leave that option open. So.
Well, that's fine. I just, I just noticed there wasn't much there and I wanted to just ask that question. As this is written up in my document in front of me. Is this just a simply discussion on this policy or do we need to vote on this?
If you do nothing tonight and the mask mandate goes away from the governor for schools, our policy is still active. So we would have to require people to still wear masks. If the vote, like Danny said, you can do three different things tonight. You can leave the policy as is. And if the governor does state that schools do not have to have a mask mandate before your next board meeting, our policy would still be in effect. If you did decide tonight that you would like to amend the policy to. You can do that and date it. We can say when the governor removes the mandate for schools, that the policy can change effective that date to May. You can also rescind the policy and it would just go way effective whatever date, if you wanted a specific date. But we're a little apprehensive about saying a specific date with the summer school guidelines not coming forth. So we thought that we would just say, if we were gonna do something in the future, which we're allowed to do, we would say when the governor removes the mandate. For schools to have the mask mandate, our policy would be effective that day or would be rescinded that day. So those are the options we presented to the board.
So for example, it would be right now, the requirement from the, uh, from the commissioner of education is that we have our mask mandate in place. Through the last student contact day of June ninth, and then for staff through their last staff day on June tenth. So that means if you were to say, once the governor and commissioner's order is lifted. Could we then as a district not have a mask mandate within our district starting on June eleventh? That could, could happen. And at that point, it would be a May. There could still be people who'd want to wear a mask and they'd certainly have the option of doing that. But everyone else in the district who's working at that time, we have our summer school for the high school starting on June fourteenth. We would have our summer school for K to eight and our E S Y program starting on June twenty-eighth. So really it's that June fourteenth date that kind of pushes because our, uh, June seventeenth is our board meeting date. So if you took action tonight in, in some way that would allow for masks to be voluntary, uh, starting on the eleventh. You, you could certainly do, or excuse me, June eleventh, uh, you could certainly do that.
Or the, or whatever date the governor chooses to lift the mask.
And that might be the best way of doing it because we, who knows if there could be any sort of change along the way. But we do know for the school system, students and staff dates are locked in. There's no changing that unless they do something really unheard of on that. And, and totally wipe that out, but that's what our, we're living under right now.
Want to not do anything, because then summer school starts, our kids still have to wear masks, even though the governor's taking it off for schools. I would want them to have the ability to choose as soon as they can, right? Does that make sense? I mean, I think that's.
So then.
So we'd have to act on it so that summer school kids aren't forced to wear masks, right?
And you can rescind the policy. Our dress code policy doesn't say specifically that they cannot wear masks. It's, it's very vague. I will just tell you that right now, because the policy as is written for face coverings right now supersedes our dress code policy. So it does say you can wear facial coverings and that's in that policy. If you do redact the entire policy. And I looked at our Facebook or at our um, student dressed and appearance five oh four policy, it does say headgear including. Um, hats, hoods, bandanas, other head coverings are not allowed except as recommended by a physician for religious reasons. Or in conjunction with a building, spirit, or incentive day. Students are expected to follow the parameters put in place by building administration. So it doesn't address, you can't wear a face covering, but again, that's very vague since it's talking headgear.
Well, this makes it more explicit.
Correct.
I think it's wise to do this, because then it's giving people permission to wear them, but they don't have to as long as the governor has. I mean, it makes sense to me.
So then, do we have a motion to that?
Yeah, yeah, the other thing that is the specifics of wearing the mask. Anybody who's been in the schools know that sometimes masks are not more. The way they're supposed to. And I always say, if it's in there and you're not gonna enforce it, do we really want to go there? That's the only thing I think. And maybe you just feel like you have to as a board. Say it's gotta be up over your nose and the specifics of everything else. But we give all these parameters of what is a mask and a gator's a mask. And I don't know, I think, you know, the subbing I've done, I'd be, half of my day would be telling, and I do, can you, you know, lift your mask up over your nose, please? I don't know. It's, it seems like it's a, the more specific you get, the more. It creates an issue for somebody. If somebody says, well, you're not making those kids wear that mask, right? I don't, maybe it has to be in there, but. There is in practice and then there's in. I don't, maybe it has to be in there, but there is in practice, and then there's in writing.
So, are you, what are you suggesting?
I, I don't know, I think, wear the mask. If the governor says, wear the mask, wear the mask, if, if not, you have the freedom to wear the mask, if you want to, but...
But if we do not rescind, if we do not make this change, and the governor...
I think you need to make the change, like you're saying. I, I, sometimes the wording in how you wear that mask is...
That's what you're...
I don't know.
One thing to keep in mind is you have a person who's voluntarily wearing that mask. Now, you would think they'd want to wear it appropriately, if they're voluntarily wearing it.
But it's kind of up to them, if they want to voluntarily wear a mask, they can voluntarily wear it.
If that was the case, why would we care how they wore it?
Then it wouldn't matter.
Where's the wording under question?
So, only if they have to.
It's under Section Three, definition of face covering, and we just kept that language the same. A face covering must be worn to cover the nose and mouth completely, because the consent, I don't want to say consensus, one of the person, people on the committee just said, well, if we're going to allow them to wear the mask, wear it properly, don't say you may wear it over your nose and mouth.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's what the person on the Policy Committee brought forward, and just said, if we're going to have that in there, and they want to wear the mask, wear it properly, not on your head as a hat, you know, wear it properly over...
You're expecting shenanigans, gotcha.
It was a recommendation from the person on the Policy Committee, so that's what we brought forward.
I mean, it is going to be optional.
Governor lifts it, it'll be optional.
Right, so basically, what it boils down to is, it would be optional for anyone to wear a mask, but if you do choose to wear the mask, wear it appropriately, that's what that language says.
I get it, I get it now, because what you're saying is, some kid might put it up here, and you're saying, any, well, you said I can have a mask, okay. So, if they go like this, then it's improper.
But I'll tell you, working at the primary school, that's like half the day. Lift up your, lift up your mask, honey.
I understand it.
Pull your mask up.
I think just changing it to say, face covering may be worn to cover the nose and the mouth completely. I mean, you, you as a board can change any verbiage the way you want, but at first, we changed it to may, and then as the Policy Committee talked, they're like, well, if they're going to actually wear it, they should wear it properly. So, you can reword it any way you want to, that was just the recommendation.
I just say, that would be better language than specifically, if you're going to wear a mask, please wear it properly, but I don't get it, if you have a choice to wear a mask, and you don't have to wear the mask, obviously, we don't want it to be a distraction, like you're wearing it strangely, but...
But is that, I mean...
I don't know, hey, you, you decided to voluntarily wear a mask, pull it up over your nose, I, I don't... Just find that odd thing to say to somebody.
Properly, but I can understand why somebody thought that it should be.
So, we have to decide if we're amending this Section Three, is that what you're telling me? So, a face covering must be worn to cover the nose and mouth completely, should not be overly tight, be comfortable, here's what's allowed. Danny, do you have any input sitting on the Policy Committee, or?
Okay, why don't we just prove it as it is, so that we don't have to wear masks? And if there's an issue regarding if someone's wearing a mask, we'll do, we can deal with that later.
Okay.
That makes sense.
So, approving it the way it is, so people have a choice, if the governor, that makes sense to me.
And perhaps we need to just put in there that we need to change it to the effect that if, whenever the mandate goes away, our policy's going away to this statement.
Correct.
So, if on June one, he comes out and says, you know, everything's great, we can take them off today.
Yes.
Then we don't have this in effect.
Correct, because you don't have another board meeting until June seventeenth, and I will get the call saying, do I have to wear a mask, and the board has to make that decision, not me.
And just going forward, because there was a lot of discussion on it, when the fall comes, we'll have, we'll revisit this, depending on what the governor says and all those things. So, we just want everybody in the community to know, we'll, we'll do this the way it needs to be done when the fall comes, too, the least restrictive way.
So, can we get a motion to that?
I'll make a motion to it.
I second it.
Can I have you put on there, in the motion, that'll be the fact of the date that the governor removes the mandate for schools, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Garcia.
Policy eight oh nine, then. Which is the...
Keep the workplace safe.
Keeping the workplace safe.
Okay. Yeah, so we're thinking we just keep that in place as is. For now, we didn't see that there should be any changes.
All right.
So, yeah.
Essentially, it's for cleaning and those items. Okay.
Basically, what that policy talked about was that if you're not feeling well, don't come to school, don't come to work, stay home, monitor your symptoms. We still want our employees and everybody at school to stay safe, so until the guidelines come through from the state on what the decision tree will be moving forward through summer school, we don't see a need to change that policy at this time, but maybe revisit it later.
Okay, so no action is needed. Moving on, Trio Summer School, we have our agreement for, our agreement with Trio for the 2021 summer school session coming around the corner, need to approve that.
I make a motion to approve Trio Summer School, is that what you need?
Yes. Your second?
Second.
Any discussion, we've done this virtually every summer, correct?
Yes, and Trio has already approved it, their board has already approved it, so they're just waiting for the Chicago League's board.
All for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Milk bids, we've received them, we need to approve them.
Well, I just want to make sure that whoever gets the milk bid, to make sure they have plenty of chocolate milk, because there was, almost was a mutiny in Taylor's Falls.
Yes, there was.
It was the worst subbing day I ever had, when we ran out of chocolate milk, so. Make sure they provide chocolate milk. They ran out of cartons, actually, to put the milk in, so.
It is a new vendor this year, so, I mean, this is, I, I will be sure to let Laura know.
A sub clause or something in there.
I will make sure to let Laura know that, so she'll talk to the new vendor about that, okay?
And going through another day like that.
Take it note right now, Mr. Lindemann.
So, you're recommending Prairie Farms?
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, we are recommending Prairie Farms this year.
I make a motion to accept the milk bid, as long as they got chocolate milk, and they're not going to run out. Stipulation.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, further discussion? I don't hear any, so we'll call for the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And then TDEP MOU, Teacher Development and Evaluation Plan, Clem has approved and signed this plan to be effective starting July first, 2021, and remain in effect until June twenty-ninth, 2021.
Yeah, so three main changes to that, the first one is deleting the SIMPS File Review Score for Special Ed Teachers, and so that's something that we've worked on with, with our cooperative, we work with SCRED and with our teacher leadership and a, and a group of teachers and, and our SCRED leaders. So, that's being removed from the TDEP plan, and of course, those teachers are evaluated in all other ways too, and then SIMP is a process that, that Special Ed teachers go through, make sure that all their, their paperwork's up to compliance, so just removing that from their, from their overall evaluation score is, is a positive thing that, that both sides would like to see, and then allowing for walkthrough models, choice for tenured teachers. So, what that means is basically, it's unannounced, you know, just walking into a classroom and doing the observation, and that was piloted this year and seemed to be very positive, and something that people want to keep moving forward. And then there's the deleting of two extra components, but there's four domains in the teacher evaluation system, probably roughly fifty components, and each teacher that was doing the observation was to pick two additional components that were to be scored, but there was no feedback given on those, so that was something that they wanted to work out of the agreement to, and just said those aren't necessary, and especially when you're doing the walkthrough model too, it's hard to, to pick those and work with it. So, those are the three TDEP changes, and as you can see, it's signed by teacher leadership, and we're recommending its approval.
So, Sheila and Cheryl, you're okay with this? And then I see the date is 2019, is that?
Oh, on the form.
In that form, we'll get an amended copy then out, I think we've sent that back and forth, but...
And see the date.
Just next to Sheila's name.
All that, okay.
We need a motion to approve.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the TDEP MOU.
I'll second it.
Favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Motion passes. Be no further business, is there any? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Change to adjourn.
Thanks for coming.